Good evening. I'd like to call the school committee meeting for Monday, March 27th, 2023 to order. Stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind you that this meeting is being livestreamed on the YouTube DHS TV media, also being taped by Dartmouth Community Television, channels nine and 18 for future broadcasts on a number of different dates and times through the week, and we appreciate that. If you have any cell phones, pagers, beepers, if you would kindly put them on silent, we would appreciate that. Roll call, please, Ms. Constance.
John Noons.
Yep.
Mary Waite.
Here.
Kathleen Amaral.
Here.
Shannon Jenkins.
Here.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Okay, at this point, we have allotted 10 minutes for public comment. If anyone wishes to speak on any items tonight, I will ask that if you have a question about the budget, that hearing is coming up, and we'll take those comments at that point in time. But if you have any comments on anything else on the agenda tonight, you're more than welcome. Again, there's 10 minutes total, so please be cognizant of that time. Okay, thank you. We will move on. All right. Next item is approval of the regular session minutes of March 6, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jenkins, second by Ms. Waite. On the motion, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And the executive session minutes of the same night.
So move Mr. Chair with the stipulation that they be held until the matters under consideration are resolved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jenkins, second by Ms. Amaral. On the motion, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Regular session minutes for March 20th and March 22nd, which were the superintendent candidate interviews.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Oliver, second by Ms. Waite. On the motion, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Student rep, student rep report. Dala?
Good afternoon, everyone. So Dartmouth is in full swing as we approach senior graduation, the end of the year for everyone. Prom is on June 1st, and the senior class is really looking forward to it. The senior class has done a good job of raising a lot of money to make sure the location's good. So overall, I mean, I'm happy about it. The senior class is pretty happy about it. Senior week is approaching as well. Also, some good events coming up. Very happy about that as well. I'm aware that this is kind of a lack of information and that my job isn't entirely just to say when prom is, but the student advisory council has been pretty busy recently as APs are coming to, close AP tests coming up in May. So a lot of classes are starting to wind down the actual content and going into more review, which is fairly intense. What I'm hoping and that what should happen for next meeting is that we should have a much more robust system of student surveying, per se. So based on the items of the agenda, we've been unable so far to get anything super effective going, but I think that by next meeting, we can definitely have something that'll allow us to survey the student body in a way that allows them to tell us anonymously their thoughts on the items of the agenda. So that should enable us to do our job a lot better. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Comments, questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Absolutely.
So I'm just curious, right? I don't know if you're going to plan to stay. We have a pretty long agenda this evening, but I'm wondering if you've heard any feedback from your students who are able to visit with the superintendent candidates while they're there, because I don't think we're scheduled to get to that till like 8:45. So I want to make sure if the students have some thoughts that we do get to hear them.
I personally, so there is a student interview committee in charge of, I think they, or no, they gave interviews to those superintendents, and I haven't spoken to them personally, so I'm not completely sure what the general thought of the student body is on the superintendents. I mean, I know there were surveys put out in terms of what the students would want to see in that, and I think we've observed those results. And that interview committee has done their job very well, as far as I know. So I think that's somewhat not out of my reach, but out of what I know currently, so.
That's fine. And I want to be clear that we do have feedback from the students. I just wanted to know if you had heard anything else. So we have gotten some feedback. We haven't ignored it. I just thought I'd ask. Thank you.
No worries.
By the way, he is making, he did make plans to stay the whole evening, because I did give him, you know, with, you know, a
That's great. Thank you.
Four-plus hour meeting. I did give him the opportunity to opt-out type of deal. So we're good at that point. Mr. Rossi, is everyone here?
Yeah, ready to roll, sir.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll welcome Mr. Rossi and some folks from the middle school up for an exciting spotlight on kids.
I wanted to give a shameless plug for Newsies Junior, which will be at the Dartmouth Middle School this Thursday and Friday at 7 o'clock. Tickets are $10 at the door, and kids, if I just came from rehearsal, kids have been crushing it. So hopefully people can come on out and see it.
What part do you have in that, Mr. Rossi, before we get to this?
I will be making my debut as Governor Theodore Roosevelt.
So I take it we're in New York?
Absolutely. 1899. So on behalf of the middle school, we'd like to thank you for this opportunity to put a spotlight on our Kindness Cafe. It's a program we're very proud of. And representing the cafe tonight, we have Mrs. Elizabeth Dufault.
Hi.
We have Hayden Barito, and we have Helena Sylvia. So what I thought I'd do is I'd read the mission statement that Mrs. Dufault has created, and then we have a video that can show you the team in action. So the Kindness Cafe is a student-run enterprise that services the staff of the Dartmouth Middle School every Wednesday morning. The cafe provides opportunities for students to learn valuable job-related skills, including, but not limited, to counting money, making change, stocking shelves, and reading orders. The cafe also provides opportunities for students to work on interpersonal skills that include verbal and nonverbal communication, the ability to handle conflict, teamwork, empathy, flexible thinking, and active listening. Students gain confidence and build independence when they deliver orders throughout the school building, which is the ultimate goal of our Kindness Cafe. So if we can cue that video up, we can take a look and see what it looks like.
I think you may have to press play, Mr. Rossi.
Where am I?
I think we don't, I don't think we have Mr. Prati here, so we're all a little bit lost.
Try it one more time.
Jonathan, come on out.
Coming in.
There you go.
Kindness Cafe is open every once in a while, 7:30 to 8:00 at the entrance. The PALS student and teacher run the cafe. Coffee, tea, snacks, bars, et cetera, are all offered for teenagers. Additional features are that if a teacher cannot leave the home room, they can fill out a Google form and have their items delivered to their room by PALS student. Elizabeth Dufault, teacher in the PALS students, prints out the form request, gives it to the PALS student willing to deliver that day and may fulfill the order. The PALS student will put the name in her little caddy with the paperwork, name, class number, items, and head out independently to deliver the Kindness Cafe order. All money that is brought in by the cafe is put right back into ordering your supplies. Having the cafe offers the opportunity for students to practice many skills, counting money, reading customers, reading directions, navigating the homies, organization, and basic social skills. Students love it. Some prefer delivering orders better than servicing the cafe, but all students have a role in the cafe's success. Welcome to the Kindness Cafe.
All right. So I do think we have some treats.
Ready, Hayden?
All right, let's do it.
Does anybody have any allergies? I've won with like no food. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maile. I appreciate that. Oh, that's nice. Thank you so much. Beautiful. Perfect. That's great. Oh, that's beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. It's beautiful. Thank you so much. Thank you. You did a great job.
If you have any questions for us, I think Ms. Dufault is ready.
Yes. Anybody ask any questions?
No. This was a great presentation. It's, when, when did this start?
We started in my first year teaching, so I've been there about seven years. And I always knew I wanted to have some sort of like service project, so I thought about popcorn, and then somehow we just came up with coffee and treats and stuff. We originally started baking as part of our life skills, but then once COVID hit, we kind of had to like readjust and change things up. So now we sell all prepackaged things, which is nice, because sometimes teachers will contact us during the day and be like, I need a bag of chips, or I need something, and we can deliver that. So it does, having the prepackaged stuff is actually a little bit better for staff and students.
Sure. What a great program that teaches skills all around, for sure, and great job to the two of you.
Thank you. Hayden loves to be the cashier, right, Hayden?
Thank you.
Sorry for front of the sun and taking the money.
She's smart. She's like, I'll do the money part.
So I'll just say, you know, some days you wake up and you're looking at a four-hour school committee meeting agenda, and you think to yourself, why am I doing this? And then you come to the school committee and you remember why. And this really shows that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. You've done a really good job. It's fantastic. I remember when it began, when Liam was still at the school. I wonder, like, has there been any thought around making it like a, I don't know, like a before-school club and having some opportunities for inclusion and some friendship building?
We've kind of thought about it. We used to have our community connections program, which was after school, so we would do some of that during then. But since COVID happened, everything kind of like adjusted a little bit. And I think we're finally now getting into like having learning partners back in. And so I do hope that we get to, you know, open it more up. And because the kids always ask me, like, can I buy something?
Yeah.
What about me? Can I come?
Or even just to learn that skill themselves and to learn from your students, have, you know, the learning partners learning from your students is something that might be beneficial. Great job.
Mary?
Yes, just a great job. It's so wonderful to see them navigating, everybody navigating around the hallway. And I just know if I was a teacher having coffee brought to me in the morning, which is bringing a huge amount of my day. So thank you so much for this presentation and for all you guys do in the school to make the teachers a little bit, the days a little bit brighter and happier. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just curious, how many orders do you deliver during on a Tuesday?
Usually we get about 10 in the morning, and then we have about 10 customers that will come. We have our regulars, and then there's some people that'll just kind of contact me during the day, be like, can I have chips? I've got my chips, or can I have this? So. And every year it kind of like grows and grows. And yeah, so.
That's super. Good luck.
Thank you.
And thank you, Perkins.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Next item, middle school PTO with their consent agenda for their fundraiser.
I'll move approval, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Dr. Jenkins, and second by Ms. Waite. On the motion, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. So to say that we are way ahead of schedule would be an understatement. Thinking a little bit out of the box, which I know is dangerous sometimes. Do we want to take up, take up the superintendent's search and discussion now and vote where? There's no set time for this one. So I mean, we can't, we can't start the budget hearing till 6:35 at the earliest.
Can't interview candidates.
Can't interview the candidate. I mean, number one, they're probably not even here yet, with all due respect, which is fine type of deal. But what I would, you know, we want to take, take up the superintendent's election type of deal. I'm good with that.
Sure.
So.
That works.
Okay. All right. So if anyone, let me, let me just start, just general. I just want to seriously take this opportunity to thank everyone that had a big part in this, from the interview committees to everyone that went on the site visits, to the different communities, whether it was via Zoom or actual travel, to also helping out when the candidates were here, you know, going around town and such. The students that, you know, and everyone that was in, you know, gave up of their time to, to meet with, meet with the candidates and such. It's appreciated. It's a yeoman's work job, and a lot of work, time, and effort goes into it. And I, for one, having done this a number of times, greatly appreciate everybody's effort. Chris, Shannon, you know, being the members on that committee. You know, I know there were several late nights type of deal. Just a few, I know. So, but thank you. So with that, I'll open it up to my committee members. Shannon?
So I'll have to say I'm, I'm a little bit torn, but I think perhaps from seeing the feedback and from my own experience, it seems to me that this comes down to two candidates. It seems to me that it's Ms. Saban McGuire or Mr. Girardi.
Yep.
Seemed to be the majority of feedback that we received was about the two of them. And so to me, it's between those two, and I see strengths in both of the candidates. And so honestly, I don't know. Right? I'm interested in hearing what you all think about this, because I see different strengths from both of the candidates. I've heard from a lot of different people. About half of them have said they liked one, half of them, like none of you all are any help to me. The comments seem to be about 50/50. So I'm interested to hear what other people think. But my thoughts seem to be that there seems to be two clear frontrunners, and maybe we should focus our discussion on those two unless people disagree.
No, that's fine.
I agree with you.
Chris?
Yeah, so first of all, I want to echo everything that you've said, being on the screening committee and with Shannon and everyone else that took part in it. There was, this was a thorough, transparent process that I'm, I can say that I'm extremely proud of, the way that this committee, as well as our staff as a whole in Dartmouth, has represented us and represented this town. I'm extremely proud of the job that everyone has done. With that, starting right from the screening committee and forwarding originally four names, but ultimately three names, there were good strengths and qualities about each of the three, I believe. We had a lot of positive feedback, phone calls, emails, speaking, getting stopped in, in the mall or supermarket or wherever we may be. But I do, at the end of the day, agree with Dr. Jenkins that, that I think, in my opinion, that this does come down to two, two candidates. And so with that, there's, this is a tough one, because I see a lot of positives and strengths among each of them. And thank you for all the feedback, and it was split. I do agree it was split right down the middle. I've done my research. I've, I've done all the follow-through, and I'm, I'm really torn right now. I, you know, I think each of them could lead this district into the future and be the person to represent us. And I think we can, each of them would get there in their own way. I'll leave it at that right now. I'll, I'll reserve my seat, my speaking, and let someone else.
Kathleen?
I really don't have much different, you know, thoughts to share. I agree that I feel that it's between the two. And, you know, kind of going into it, admittedly, I, I was, I had a bias leaning toward Dr. Saban McGuire. You know, I was trying to remember, okay, that's because you sat in on the visit. You know, I try to like separate myself and forget who they are, but, and try to be as fair as possible. But I felt that, you know, she did have some, a lot of great strengths. And I loved the way that her colleagues spoke about the incredible support that she's been to, to them over the years. And, and I, and I liked how she spoke about, you know, looking through that teacher lens, that on the ground, boots on the ground. I also, though, after the interviews, and again, getting the feedback, which was helpful, but yet not helpful, because it was split down the middle. And, you know, you read an email or you read a comment from the survey as to why one over the other, and they were all very similar. And Dr. Girardi, what I did appreciate about him in the interview was the way in which he was, shared stories and had a strong emphasis in his interview about his compassionate leadership and about, you know, family and health and wellness first of his staff. And I thought that that is certainly something that our district can benefit from, having that kind of leadership. And so I don't know that I want to say I'm leaning towards Dr. Girardi, because I do feel that I, I think it's a, it's a good position to feel that, you know, no, I, it's not good to be indecisive, but the two candidates, as to Chris's point, could lead this district. And I feel that the surveys told us that others felt similarly, that they, it's, it's about the two of them. They're the overarching top two strong choices. So one or the other, I, I don't know that I would, you know, not support. You know, perhaps I'll make a motion in a minute, but no. But I wouldn't necessarily not support a motion. I don't feel that, yeah, they both have good, good skills. So I'll just leave it at that without rambling.
Thank you. Mary?
Yeah, so, you know, of course, you know, I feel also it's down to two candidates. And, you know, I was part of Dr. Girardi's virtual site visit. At that point, I was, you know, very impressed by the way that his staff spoke about him coming specifically down into their offices, rather than, you know, they had to approach him. And, you know, listened to a parent who said, you know, she disagreed with the results of a conversation she had involving her daughter with Mr. Girardi, but ultimately she felt listened to. And, you know, and she, she thought the process was very, again, like transparent and fair. You know, teachers and staff spoke about his, you know, again, compassionate leadership, and that stuck with me. Coming out of Monday's interview, I think it was clear that Dr. Saban McGuire was the standout, you know, and I really thought and agreed with all of your observations about the fact that, you know, she was very focused. She had the very specific examples to explain like initiatives she took in Brockton, for good or for bad, and how she, she was a listener, a productive member of a team, creating coalition to move forward. I still think, after, you know, watching both candidates, Dr. Girardi on stage, I am leaning to Dr. Girardi. I think that his, the diversity of his experiences in different districts will serve us well. That is one thing I noted when we got some feedback. And again, it was, it's really, I think we'll be in great hands with Dr. Saban McGuire if we go that direction. But I do think it's helpful to have someone who has such a different lens of projects that they've led in different towns. You know, I know, you know, we're looking for, you know, not forward, we are probably anticipating some serious building projects. He has that experience. He also notably led Moon Socket through a budget crisis. And again, that's certainly something that we're going to be dealing with as well. I knew that there were some concerns around the no-confidence vote, and I did investigate that. You know, it seemed to be among like asbestos and some other issues. You know, I will say, like, you know, reading into that a little bit more, and maybe, you know, my colleagues here have some more insight on that. It seems to me that those were tasks that, you know, he did not have, that full information hadn't been put out there for him either. So he was, you know, trying to make the best decisions he was, given the information that he had. But again, I'm certainly open to what my colleagues have found out about that. That was the one hitch, and, you know, as I went through my decision-making. I do think that he'll be a strong leader who is able to bring people together, and I'm hoping that he can convey, and I got the sense that he will be able to go onto the community and convey our needs and be a real marketer for, for the town and, you know, our financial challenges ahead. And so we really need someone who's going to be forward-facing. I've also been impressed, as I went through, by every single person in every district talked about his tremendous work ethic, his kindness, and his willingness to go, you know, really out in the district, staying Friday nights late at Block Island to get to games that parents didn't even go to. So there were a lot of different things. But again, I want to step back and say, I also think Dr. Saban McGuire would be excellent as well. I just, you know, given the wealth of information, having to make a decision between the two, I just would lean towards Dr. Girardi.
Thank you, Mary. I kind of agree with, I agree with my colleagues. We've got, I think, two out of the three, and let me be clear, I appreciate the fact that the search committee brought four candidates. They were all good. There's, there's no doubt about that type of, type of deal. One withdrew after the site visit, and that's, that person's prerogative type of deal. But, you know, the other three candidates did, did shine. Their visits, three of, two of the three, because I did not do Brockton, which was by Zoom and snow, was, was the one I did not do. But, you know, we've got two good candidates. I agree. Either one of them is going to be perfect. Either one of them is going to be perfect, is going to be good for this district. I have my thoughts, you know, who it should be and who I'm leaning to, towards, and, you know, again, yeah, I agree, Shannon, Chris, it's fifty-fifty split with the surveys and everything else, so, and thank you to everyone who participated, you know. But as I've also said to my colleagues a number of times, this comes down to our decision and such. So, that's where we are, and that's where we go, so. Okay. So, that being said, Dr. Jen-
All three of us have our hands up.
So, you know, Ms. Wait brought up, and I do, while the issue of the no confidence vote was about building facilities, I do have some really deep concerns about that. This wasn't like a close vote where maybe, right, I just ran the numbers again. Ninety-five percent of the staff voted no confidence, seventy-two point five percent of the total number of teachers voted no confidence, eighty-seven percent of the teachers that voted, voted no confidence. And it was primarily about building conditions, but it was also about transparency, trust, and communication. And that worries me a little bit. I don't know, it's like the risk-reward, right? I feel like both of the candidates are very good and be good, and that no confidence makes me a little bit more concerned about the potential risk. And I don't know how to interpret that.
Just, I, listening to Mary talk about the difficulties moving forward with the budget, I do have to, I feel that, in reading the comments and then speaking to some folks, I feel that Dr. Saban McGuire, and again, okay, here I am talking about my, having been in the home visit and having the luxury of feeling like I know her a little bit more. In her home visit, what folks talked about, and then she met with us at the end of the day as well via Zoom, and I don't think she really let it all out there at her interview. But what she spoke about that was impactful to me is that she always leads with her why. So, she gets the buy-in, she wants to build that, you know, that team process. She, when talking about transitioning from a level five to a level one school, somebody made a comment about the teachers, and she said, "It's never about the teachers. It's the same teachers that we're teaching when we were level five that are teaching." That, and when it was transformed within, throughout her leadership. And so she said, you know, "It's never about the teachers." She's always thinking about how, you know, what it's like in the classroom, and then her reasons for coming to Dartmouth. She feels that, having had the vast sort of responsibilities in her role in Brockton, coming to a smaller district like Dartmouth, she feels that something that she looks forward to, is what she said, so that she can spend more time in the buildings. And in a way, I can imagine the responsibility of such a large district and coming to ours that it would be something to look forward to, to be, have more time with that relationship building. So, I just felt like I wanted to also, oh, sorry, I went on a little tangent, the why. And then the why, and then having that deep why, and being able to get buy-in because she's so passionate about selling whatever it is that she needs for the school. So, she did talk aloud about that in the visit, and she really didn't represent herself that way in the interview, which was unfortunate, but, so I put that out there to confuse y'all a little bit more.
Chris, did you have your hand up?
I did, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
No, no, that's all right. So, we have two candidates here. We have one, June, Dr. Saban McGuire, comes to us with twenty-nine years of experience in an urban school setting. She interviewed extremely well, I felt, on both occasions. It sounds like the site visits went very well. We've gotten positive feedback from her. I mean, I'm sorry, we've gotten positive feedback from our staff about her. She seems as though she has a vision in her head of where the future of education needs to go, or where she would like to take Dartmouth. It is a little concerning that all of her twenty-nine years is in Brockton. With that, we also, on the flip side of this, I think, I kind of alluded to previously when I was talking, that both candidates, I feel, could take this district to the next level in different ways. It's all about, in my opinion, it's all about relationships and building your team up, being visible, getting buy-in from our staff members, our parents, our stakeholders, the town hall, certainly important to have a good relationship with them. At the end of the day, I think this comes down to who is going to be able to embrace Dartmouth and gain the respect and understanding of our staff. Because, let's face it, you know, when I first came on ten years ago, Dartmouth was in, this school system was in a much different spot. It's why I got on this committee. And I just want to make sure that whoever we get can earn the trust of not only the school committee, but of our educators, our faculty and staff. That leads me to Dr. Girardi, in which, sure, I certainly agree with Dr. Jenkins' concerns around the vote of no confidence. I will say that, being in education myself and seeing a lot of moving parts and with the multi-hazard plan, which, or the asbestos plan, is certainly, it's concerning, the article, this is just one example, this is one article. We all know how the news sometimes can-
Skew.
-spin or skew people's perceptions. I did like the public interview with Mr. Giradi, with Dr. Girardi, his warmth and personality. That's not to say that Dr. Saban McGuire, you know, was different in her interview, but I just, I felt as though that came out a little more in the public interview and in hearing some of the comments from staff. Like I said, I think both of these candidates can take us to the next level. It comes back to, though, in my opinion, that we need to make sure that we're looking at, how can we build a cohesive, how is this person going to take our building blocks, which is our central office team, our building principals, our educators, our teaching assistants, our support staff, and build them up? Which one of these candidates is going to do that?
Mary?
Yeah, I think the challenge is, I think they both will. And again, to your point, in different ways, you know, I, I mean, again, like, I think the numbers that Shannon, you know, put out there, or Dr. Jenkins, excuse me, put out there regarding the new confidence vote, I think that is concerning because it is, you know, even if we can say like an article skews, I mean, those numbers are the numbers of folks.
Right, I agree.
So, I mean, again, that's hard. I mean, I, that is my one hitching point, you know, along, otherwise, I think for me it would be definitely Dr. Girardi, but it's one of the reasons I want to talk about that. I agree with you, I thought his warmth was conveyed, but there's no doubt that Dr. Saban McGuire is a huge champion for her staff. I mean, that was something that, you know, was conveyed during the course of her interview, and again, in all the exits from those folks who attended that, you know, interview on Zoom, so, I don't, you know, again, I'm, it's tough, I'm torn. Again, I would lean towards Dr. Girardi still, but I, that is, you know, I could go either way because that is something for me that is in concern. And we are going to be asking him to run a large, likely, some large building projects.
See, and I've, since the interview night, and, you know, I've done the research, and there must have been an article someplace that somebody forwarded to you because I never saw that one on the no confidence vote type of deal, which is fine, I'm good. But I have leaned, and even with the research I've done and calls that I've made, I have leaned towards Dr. Saban McGuire and such. I think she's the person that will lead this district. Stable is one thing that comes to mind, you know, twenty-nine years in a district, you know, moving through the ranks type of deal, whether, you know, from, you know, teacher and administrator, and now, you know, yes, she's only been in that position a couple of years, but still, it's, you know, a new position that was created, so that's why she's new at it. So, I, you know, with Dr. Girardi, you know, yes, like I said, you know, yeah, we've got two good, two people that we've got to talk about, but my leaning is in all services to Dr. Saban McGuire. But again, Shannon?
Well, I'm, yeah, maybe hell is rising over, I'm just kidding, because we're in agreement, Mr. Noons.
Oh, my God.
I'm just kidding. Usually when there's a split, Mr. Noons and I are not on the same side, but we are. I agree with you, Mr. Noons. And I'm going to reference, I'm going to go back to the site visits, the summaries that Mr. Kylie sent to me, us, all of us. And the site visit for Dr. Saban McGuire was long, long list of positives, very, very, very positive things, with very little in terms of areas of concern for the people who did the site visit. Conversely, for Dr. Girardi, the strengths were a little smaller and the areas of concerns were larger, in part because we were interviewing in a district where, you know, he's only part-time, he's only been there, you know, and that was one of the things, like, I wish we could have heard, we could have done a site visit or, you know, something there, but there's, it's not just about that in the areas of concern from the people who went on the site visit. So, again, joking aside, sorry, Mr. Noons, but I think I would agree with you that that's the way that I'm leaning.
Kathleen?
Can I just ask a question that we probably don't know the answer to, but as we sit here at this moment, do we know of any pending offers?
Yes.
Because we do, we do.
But not offers, but decisions.
Decisions. Dr. Saban McGuire is a finalist in Hudson, and according to the town website, their school committee is supposed to be meeting at seven o'clock tonight to make their decision.
Oh, gee.
Good thing we're ahead of schedule.
Yeah. Which is kind of one of the reasons I was hoping we would to move this up. But seriously, you know, I do not know about Dr. Giradi or Dr. Schwam, I know nothing, to be honest. Dr. McGu, unless, Mr. Kylie, do you know of any besides that?
No, no.
Okay, thank you. Mary?
So, just, you know, reflecting on this, it seems that there are, you know, there is a concern about Dr. Girardi, at least in the no confidence, whereas you don't have any, you know, everything is more or less positive with Dr. Saban McGuire. So, you know, again, if we're going to, you know, go through the process, it sounds that, you know, I mean, I'd be fine with that, like leaning towards Dr. Saban McGuire for that reason. Again, I, not just that reason, I mean, obviously, she's an incredibly talented person, but I can, you know, looking at this from that lens, in terms of like coalition building around stakeholders, I mean, that is a piece of it.
Okay. I just had my hand up, but.
No, no, I'm, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to listen to her and I didn't see.
Yeah, no.
I'm sorry. Chris?
Yeah, I appreciate your, my colleagues' comments, and for me, coming into this evening, I was completely open-minded, I wanted to hear everyone else's perspectives.
I did too, I did too.
Me too.
I think it was important, and I am comfortably sold. Therefore, I would like to make a motion that the Dartmouth School Committee appoint Dr. June Saban McGuire as the next superintendent of schools pending contract negotiations.
Second.
Okay, move by Chris, second by Kathleen. On the motion, any other discussion? Hearing none. Go ahead, nope.
No, I was going to interject a joke that's not really funny, so. I was trying to get on to the website to see what Hudson pays per pupil, but that was a bad joke. And it wasn't a joke, but I'm making it a bad joke now, but anyway.
All right, no.
My website wasn't working.
Computers are wonderful when they work.
Yes.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So, it is the unanimous opinion of the Dartmouth School Committee to appoint Dr. June Saban McGuire of the assistant superintendent, one of the assistant superintendents at the city of Brockton, as our next superintendent of schools pending contract negotiations. At this point in time, I'm going to take a recess. Chris, Shannon, one of you? I've got contact information for Dr. McGuire, if you want to go out and make a phone call and let her know.
I will do that.
Okay, all right, the committee will be in recess, we'll be back as soon as we can. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, welcome. We are back in open session. It is six twenty-nine, according to my wonderful watch, it doesn't work all the time. Mr. Oliver?
So I contacted Dr. Saber McGuire, and she graciously accepted the position pending contract negotiations.
Yes.
She said she was very excited to start our work together, and she's looking forward to the next steps.
Beautiful, good.
Good.
Thank you. And again, in all services, my thanks to everyone that had a hand in this.
Thank you.
So, yeah. Okay, we are still a little bit ahead of schedule, only because of the budget hearing and the time, the time that we have on that, so we're going to kind of, a couple of...
Not just the budget hearing.
Six thirty-five.
Five.
So.
Five minutes.
We've got five minutes, so give or take. And again, if we started at six thirty-nine, it doesn't, you know...
You can start late, but you can't start early.
Again, that's right, so. One of the things that I asked Mr. Kylie to put on the agenda was for a reserve fund, from the town's reserve fund, to cover the cost of the superintendent's search. We've done this before, we did it when we hired Dr. Giffett, just because of the timing of that, it wasn't an item that we had budgeted for type of deal, and so, you know, to make this transfer and to pay this bill, it's got to be, it's got to come from a line item someplace different, you know, affecting, you know, student services or wherever, wherever it comes from. So what I would like to do is to get the paperwork, Mr. Kylie, get the paperwork from Town Hall and fill out a request for a reserve fund transfer, which is to, to cover the cost of the superintendent's search with MASC and all the other incidental expenses that goes with it. Just so everyone is aware, Chapter Forty, Section Six is Reserve Funds for Extraordinary Expenditures Establishment. And Section Six says, "To provide for extraordinary, extraordinary and unforeseen expenditures, a town may, at an annual or special town meeting, appropriate a transfer of sum or sums not exceeding the aggregate five percent of the levy of the fiscal year preceding, the fiscal year for which the fund, to be known as the reserve fund, is established. No direct drafts against this fund shall be made, but transfers from the fund may be made from time to time to be voted by the Finance or Appropriation Committee of the town, in towns having such a committee, and in other towns by the selectmen, and the town accountant, in towns having such an official, or in other towns, the auditor or board of auditors shall make such transfers accordingly." So what this means is, the finance, there's an article at town meeting to fund the reserve fund for this, which is extraordinary and unforeseen items, and the finance committee has control of those funds, and that's where we have to go with it. So, that's what I would like to do. And yes, this, this is, we did it with, with Dr. Jenk, Dr. Giffett, when we hired her.
Yeah, I remember that.
And that, because that was the same year that we also had back-to-back storms over three or four weekends of like ten or twelve inches apiece, so I also went to them and said, "Give us money for the snow, the extraordinary snow removal." And they just kind of looked at me and I went, "If this had been weekend storms with two inches that we could, you know, push off with a broom, I wouldn't be here." But we've had to hire equipment and extra salt and every, you know, additional overtime charges, so that was the logic I used with that also. So, so we, we good with that? Okay. Mr. Kylie, if you get the paperwork, I will...
The committee want to vote on that?
Want to vote on it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, that we request a reserve fund transfer to, to cover the cost of the superintendent's search.
One second.
Move by Dr. Jenkins, second by Ms. Wade on the motion, any discussion? Mary, Shannon, I'm sorry.
I'll just note, you know, we're soon going to hear that we're not looking at, you know, a great budget year next year, and we're going to have to move things like supplies potentially onto school choice, so to the extent that we can, I mean, we do this at UMass Dartmouth, if you have some money left at the end, you can pre-purchase supplies, we can do that. I'm hopeful that this reserve fund transfer can help set us up a little bit for avoiding some of the pain of next year.
Yeah.
So I think it's a good idea.
All right, all right. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ooh, boy, is that good time. Right on the dot. All right. So, it is now six thirty-five, and I will open the budget hearing on the FY, proposed FY twenty-four school budget. Mr. Kylie?
Mr. Nunes, so we advertised the budget hearing appropriately and are prepared to hear any comments from the public on it.
Thank you. All right. Excuse me. Okay, at this point in time, anyone who has any comment on the budget for FY twenty-four, I will invite you to the podium. I will ask that you do state your name for the record, so that we have a record of it. Anyone? Okay. Last chance, and I'm not trying to be, not trying to push. Okay, thank you. We will close the public hearing. Any, so, fix care of that. All right. Why don't we do thi, why don't you talk about the budget while we're on it?
Okay.
Okay?
Might take a few minutes.
That's fine.
Okay.
We're good.
So, we appreciate the fact that, you know, we've, we've had some discussion about this, this proposed budget, and we're currently proposing a budget that has a five-point-one percent increase, and we understand that, that funding for that budget presents some challenges. So, I've provided you folks with some information in acknowledgement of those challenges that would focus on reducing the FY twenty-four budget based on some attrition and other factors that we feel we can focus on that would still minimize the impact on students. And I'll just talk a little bit about each one, if you have any questions, stop me any time. So, the adjustments that we're proposing tonight are as follows. We received a resignation for an instructional technology specialist. You might recall that we had increased the district's instructional technology specialists with ESR funds last year in a one-year position. We've continued, we decided it was worthwhile, great value for the district, and we continued that into year two, which is this year, for that position. But we recognize that the ESR funds are coming to an end, and given the fact that we have an opening right now, it makes sense to address that in this, in this fiscal year twenty-four budget. So, our proposal is to not fill that position for fiscal year twenty-four. We also received a recent notification of a retirement for an instructional coach. We are proposing not filling that position. So, our plan is to make sure that all buildings have support, but there clearly will not be the same level of support. But we understand what we're facing ahead, we have a vacancy, and we feel like we need to address that right now. So we would not fill that position, and we would reallocate support. We have one, which I've never seen this in this district, but we have one elementary classroom teacher retirement. Our proposal is to look at class size and adjust class size in a lower class size grade that would fill that role. So, it's not that we're not going to replace that particular staff member in their role, but overall in the district, we would look at areas of very low class size and adjust accordingly. We have the same situation with, we already have a proposal for the preschool classroom teacher, so, sorry, Mary, I'm so used to looking to the left.
Oh, no, no.
I'm not used to looking down that side of the table, but... So similarly, we would propose that in an effort to, to reduce our request, that we would look at class size as a way to, to adjust, and we feel we can do that with limited impact on, on students. The other, the other issue that I think we need to, you know, we need to look at in some way, and Dr. Jenkins brought it up, is to shift some supplies into the school choice budget. We are proposing shifting fifty thousand dollars of supplies into the school choice budget at this point. Hopefully, you know, that will make a difference. at this point. Hopefully, you know, that will make a difference. It's not staff, so there's not quite the same level of commitment, although these are supplies that we need, and we will need next year, and we will need the year after that. I mean, we're not, we're not the type of organization that has $50,000 worth of extra supplies. It's not, it doesn't exist. So, we do need to think about that long-term, but at this point, we felt it necessary to do that. So, those reductions would result in a savings of $361,343. So, what was a 5.1% budget proposal is, that would, would now be a 4.4% budget proposal. Again, our attempt is to minimize the impact on students with these cuts. There's, there's more to the story as to why we're bringing this forward. And if you don't have questions about those specific cuts, I'd like to talk a little bit about that, and then if you want to come back to it, we can, if that's okay.
You want to wait for the end, or that's up to you?
No, I'll wait for the end.
Okay.
So, I supplied with you, I supplied you with some information regarding the town's budget projection. The town projection has a $950,000 variance from where we are currently proposing at, at 5.1%.
How much again?
$950,000. Our revised proposal, so if, if we reduce that, it would still be almost $590,000 more than what the town has projected for us. But from our perspective, from the perspective, I think, of the administration, our hope is that there could be some way that we could fund the proposal at 4.4%. Any reductions beyond this have a significant impact on students. And we know we're facing, going to face a difficult, you know, a difficult process with the fiscal year '25 budget. So, our, our hope is that we could gain some support for, certainly first gain your support, that's the critical part of this, and then, and then move to gaining support elsewhere, to try and minimize the impact on kids. Questions? Chris?
Yeah, I guess I'll start. So, the number I have here, you said around 598,000, around 590.
590, yeah.
Give or take. And these are the numbers that the town has presented, well, the original 900,000 was what the town presented us with, or presented you with. Is that correct?
That's right.
Was it, was there an open dialogue, and I assume there probably was, because I know your, you know, how you operate, Mr. Kylie, as to what the significance of these, this difference would mean to, to the Dartmouth school system?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, so, I had a meeting with the town administrator and the new finance director for the town. We had a discussion about this. The feeling is that what was presented to me was a 3.1-ish percent budget increase for us. The, the discussion was limited flexibility on the town side to fund anything beyond that. So, I, at this point, yes, I, I relayed the fact that what we're talking about is reductions in staff. There's no, you know, we're 80% staffing. So, there, you know, there's no way to make up that money without, without some further reductions. And obviously, we already knew we were going to be up against it in fiscal year '25, so was really hoping not to make these decisions this year. But at this point, they understand that it would be staffing, it would be things like class size, it would be things like support staff, administrative staff, everything would have to be, you know, would have to be addressed, so.
So, I'm of the opinion that, you know, you certainly, I support the reductions, I'm just speaking on behalf of myself. I certainly support the reductions that you proposed, as much as I, you know, I'm a huge advocate for technology. I certainly understand the physical response, fiscal responsibility, and we're not, these are positions, these are not people at this time. And I certainly support that, and I would also support moving forward with the budget at the 4.4, I believe you said, 4.4%, and moving that forward to, you know, this is what this school department needs. We're already facing some significant struggles with learning loss and social emotional needs. We're doing what we can. We know ESER's drying up, so I would certainly support moving forward with that, with that figure.
Thank you. Shannon?
So, I agree with Mr. Oliver, you know, I support moving forward with this. I, I just have two questions. One, so, you know, between the three and four, we're sort of looking at moving things around. Is that going to increase class sizes in some places? Or are we, it is? Okay, I just, I want to make, get that out there for the record, to make that clear, because we know how important having smaller classes is on student learning, particularly at the elementary level. So I just want to make that clear to everyone who's listening and watching.
Yes, it will have an impact. We're trying to minimize that impact and look at the classes that.
Where has the least impact?
Where we can have the least impact.
Okay. The other sort of question comment I want to make, so the instructional materials, you said about 50,000 onto school choice. How much do we get approximately each year? 600,000 from school choice?
Yes.
So my concern is, I know we have to do that, but I really feel like we're going to have to use school choice funds to ease us off the, the ESER cliff. And to the extent that we're now already committing school choice funds to other things, it becomes even more difficult to, to ease us off that cliff. You know, we are doing, I think, as a, as a school committee and a, as a system, trying to do what we can to provide some relief to the town. I know that it's difficult, but it's just not a good idea to put recurring, and this is not towards you, this is to the general public, to put recurring revenue, or recurring expenses on a non-recurring revenue source. It's what we can do at this point in time, but I'll remind people listening, you know, I think John and I, Mr. Nunes and I were involved in the, like, 2006, was it, when, you know, we hit, I like to say we hit the Great Recession in Dartmouth before the Great Recession happened. And part of it was because we had started to do that. Again, I'm going to support this, but I think it's important for the community to know that, that things are getting a little, a little desperate here. And we need to, we need more revenue, or we're, it's going to start having a real negative impact on the quality of education that our students get. That's all.
Kathleen?
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with my colleagues, and I, to Dr. Jenkins took my question about class size, but I, I do want to thank you for doing what you can to be thoughtful around, you know, attempting to compromise or show a good faith effort to meet them somewhere in, in a way that has the least impact in the classroom, aside from those class sizes, but with appreciation to thinking about those smaller class sizes. So, I appreciate and, you know, I would support that for, what you brought down to 4.4%, but it's just incredibly frustrating, the, sounds like the lack of, of open-minded flexibility of recognizing what an impact on a school district like Dartmouth, what this, what their, you know, proposed hard line, so it sounds, the impact that'll have on, on our community, on our school district, but also on our, on our, the larger community in terms of, you know, the implications of that on the education of kids. So, you know, thank you for your attempts at meeting them somewhere that is not best for us, but, you know, just trying to be mindful and fiscally responsible and, and all of that. But, like you said, there's really no more that we can do without having an incredible impact on, on learning in the classroom. So.
Yeah, actually, you know, and, and again, this is why it's so critical that we have our new superintendent who can be front and center, you know, as part of this process to convey our needs and, and really, you know, assist, you know, Mr. Kylie and all of us in getting that message out to the town and the realities of this. I also think, again, like, for students to come home and, and, and express, like, their concerns to their families, who, so they can really understand. And, and Dr. Nunes, I, I know, you know, we have a student rep here. Is there an opportunity for him to ask any questions? Is that appropriate within this?
By, by me?
Would you like to ask any questions?
I have no questions, but I appreciate the offer.
All right. Because again, like, this directly affects our students in the classroom, so I, you know, and all of our staff. So I just want to make sure, you know. I certainly agree with my colleagues and, you know, appreciate, thank you first of all, of all your work in advocating for our kids. And, you know, it's, it is, I agree, it's really frustrating to see this. And I certainly don't want to see any further reductions, but I think I understand your choices. One question, over the last two years, have our school choice students, has that number been pretty static? Are we, you know, exciting, I know that with Westport building a new high school, we didn't have a lot of students from Westport. Were those seats filled from other communities?
We, yes, we still have ample applicants.
Okay, good. Good, good. Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Jim. I appreciate that. I mean, if you think about it, you know, 311,000 of this is direct student effect, effective. You know, I mean, yes, it's, you know, a retirement and a moving, but in moving personnel around type of deal, but it's not replacing the, the personnel. I mean, you know, after that, you know, as, as I've said many times, this is not, you know, if we've got a, if we don't get this, this is not cutting a box of paper clips or a ream of paper type of deal. It's personnel, and boy, that really, you know, that, that hurts in a hurry, type of deal. I don't know, I haven't seen the town budget yet. I haven't, they haven't, they haven't given us anything, you know. So, hopefully they will. I know, we've got a meeting Thursday night with the FinCom?
Yes, I was going to mention that we've been invited to the Finance Committee. They posted their agenda for Thursday night, 5:30.
5:30 instead of 6:30. That's not good. Kate, would you do me, would you post a meeting that we may be, the school committee may be in attendance at that meeting? Just if anybody, I'm going to be there, but if anybody else, that way, there's no issues.
I'll do that as I last hurrah.
What's that?
I said I'll be there, too.
That way, I mean, if we're there, that type of deal. Okay. Okay, all right. That being said, I'm assuming if we all vote no on your budget request, yeah, I know.
It's your prerogative.
That, that is, I know. Seriously, as much as I hate to, I'll entertain a motion to go along with Mr. Kylie's proposed FY '24 budget reduction in the amount of 361,343, of which 50,000 of it is going to be school choice funds.
So moved.
And Kate, if you, Kate, with all due respect, if you could, there 50,000 in the minutes that it's school choice funds. Thank you. I got a motion by Mr. Oliver?
Motion by Mary.
Motion by Mary. I apologize. Mary?
Second.
Second by Mr. Oliver. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on the budget, sir?
That is it.
Okay. Mr. Martin, we're good to go.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening, Lori. Ms. Jordan. Evening and welcome, and thank you for coming. I know we're a little bit late. I apologize.
That's okay.
We're just running a couple of things and that type of deal, so I apologize for that. Thank you for being here. We have scheduled one hour for this interview, type of deal. So, what I will basically do, I think you know all of us, but to keep things uniform, I'll ask my committee members to introduce themselves to you.
Sure.
Chris Oliver?
Shannon Jenkins.
Oh.
Kathleen Ammaral.
John Nunes, chair.
Mary Wade, vice chair.
So, what we would like to do is kind of put this in three parts. We've introduced ourselves. We're going to give you an, an opportunity to make an opening statement. We have some prepared questions for you, type of deal. And then at the end, if there's some time and you want to make a closing statement and/or like to ask us questions, more than welcome to.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm thrilled. You know, I, I come here with over 19 years in education experience. The past seven here, working as a special education administrator here, and then prior to that, working for 12 years in the Fall River Public Schools as a service provider, as a counselor, and, you know, definitely a service provider of special education students. I find that probably the most rewarding work that can be done is in special education. It is wonderful to see students grow and thrive in ways that they never thought possible, and that is, to me, one of the most rewarding things. I've been privileged over the past seven years to work with our out-of-district population, which in, in my mind is our most vulnerable students, and are the ones with our most significant challenges. And I always put the needs of those students first, while at the same time balancing the fiduciary responsibility that I have to the district. But ultimately, not only in keeping the needs of the students first, I also have formed relationships with parents as they've made some very challenging and difficult decisions regarding their education of their students. At the school level, I consider myself a good listener. I'm an advocate for students. I'm an advocate for staff. And I, there's no aspect of this job that I haven't touched and concerned in some way. During a maternity leave that our current People Support Services Administrator had, I took over for her during that time, which happened to be during COVID times as well. So, that was not only challenging in so many ways, but I've, I've spent my time in, you know, a supervisory role. I've been in, on hiring committees. I've formed relationships with community members and community organizations that have continued to support our district. I have been at the forefront of compliance and regulatory issues, which is a major part of special education as well. And I think one of my, my biggest, one of the biggest things that one of the biggest things that I have loved about this job is working with the talented staff that we have. There isn't a day that goes by that I don't learn something from them. And, you know, I think my, my goal would be to continue to build capacity and leadership possibilities within the district for, for staff as well. And I think I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. We have a set of prepared questions for the candidates tonight. You have a copy of them in front of you, just for you to follow along and such in case you need to look back at it.
Sure.
And such. So, what's that? Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. Nunes. Good evening. Good to see you. I'll be starting off. As you know, the position of Pupils Support Services Administrator is multifaceted, with the ideal candidate balancing many priorities. In your opinion, what is the most important aspect of the job?
You know, I go back to a free, appropriate public education. You know, I think that, that is the right of every student within this district. It's the right of every, any student, you know, in special education. And I think everything is driven from that. You know, in helping to find and support staff in supporting those students, in making the best decisions regarding programming for those students, in looking at fiscally how we can align kind of our, our philosophy about least restrictive environment in order to, you know, to give students that free, appropriate public education. You know, I, I think of it, in, in some ways, it's about equity. It's, it's about, you know, all kids having, you know, not only the right to a free, appropriate public education, but as much as possible to be able to provide that in the community that they live in. And, you know, obviously, there are times where that unfortunately can't, can't be done. But for the most part, I mean, I think that's one of the biggest goals for this position.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, I believe I have the next question. And my question is, how would you describe your leadership style? And can you relate this style to specific examples of your leadership in action?
So, you know, I, I think of it, you know, it's, it's multifaceted. I, I think of it kind of in three different ways. You know, I think that there are those decisions that, that need to be made that are either regulatory or personnel-related that, you know, are kind of the buck stops here. And those are decisions that need to be made by the person in charge. And, you know, I think that the second way that I lead, and I think this is probably the way I like to lead the most, is, is being able to collaborate and, and talk to, and collaborate with staff and collaborate with others, that there are a lot of decisions that I would want input into. And that's not to say that maybe in the end, I wouldn't be making the decision and making the decision that I feel is right. But I also feel that that decision can't be made in isolation and that there are people who have great ideas and great opinions about things that we need to kind of value. You know, I, I think of that in terms of, even some of the work that I've done, you know, I'll hearken it back to COVID. And, you know, just communicating and making decisions, particularly, I supervise the nurses. And so, you know, one of the things that I really worked hard with is, A, supporting them because they had a very difficult job during, during COVID. But also listening to them and gathering their feedback about, you know, plans for, you know, the way we were going to handle COVID protocols, the plan, you know, the way we were going to handle testing, all of that. And I think that, you know, that wasn't a decision, I, I, I don't even pretend to be a nurse. And so, you know, that was something that, you know, I needed and I wanted their input on. And so I would think that that's the second way that I lead. And the third way, which, you know, I think is, is, you know, the democratic style for those types of things that, you know, when do we want to have the meeting? On a Monday or a Wednesday? You know, where, you know, we can, you know, that's kind of up for grabs. So I think, you know, those, those are the three ways that I lead. I would hope and want to lead two and three more often. And if I was leading, you know, the first way that I described, I don't think that's the most effective. You know, I, I, you know, I think that there would be a problem, you know, with, with a leader who solely chose just to lead from top down.
Thank you for that.
My turn. This is a position that will sometimes, you will sometimes have to say no to a parent or student. How would you explain that answer to the parent or student? And as a follow-up, could you give us an example of when you had to do that and what was the outcome?
You know, I think, you know, as, as a parent of two students with special education needs, you know, I think that parents know their, their students best. However, I think that there are times that there, there can be a disconnect with what we see here at school as opposed to what parents see at home. And, you know, there are times where a parent has differing opinions on what a student needs. And I, first and foremost, you know, I, I'm an empathetic listener. And I, I value what parents have to say because I don't think, I certainly don't have all of the answers. And I don't know their child best. But I also, but I do know what's, what a team says is best for a student educationally. And so I think, you know, first and foremost is I would look to the IEP team to see what exactly the IEP team feels is, is the best that, you know, from their professional opinions, the best for, for a particular student. You know, I can think of, you know, a certain, you know, situation where, you know, parents really, you know, really struggled with the idea that their student did not need services anymore. And, you know, the, the IEP team, myself included, you know, really had seen so much progress with this student and, and had so much data to support that progress. And that was a tough conversation because I, you know, parents, you know, really, I can understand that struggle. You know, I can put myself in their situation. I can understand the struggle. But at the same time, you know, particularly situations like that are times for celebration, that a student has, you know, reached their goals and, you know, got to a certain potential that, you know, we all want for, for our students educationally. But, you know, it, it's, it's standing firm in, in knowing that you are doing what is best for a student, you know, regardless of kind of that disconnect between what a parent wants and what, what you know in fact is, is the right decision. And, and those are, those are tough conversations. You know, those are, those are tough conversations to have because, you know, for the most part, you know, I think parents and IEP teams work together. But there are times where there is that kind of conflict. And it's the ability to kind of work through the conflict and put the needs of the student first, put, you know, FAP on the table, Free and Appropriate Public Education, and be okay with making that decision for that student.
Thank you.
I'm next. Hi, Lori. So this question is two parts. I'll start with the first part and then a little follow-up. Recognizing the various programs and special education models we currently have in Dartmouth, please describe how the district can best support the unique needs of each.
So what, so when we, when we think about, you know, the continuum of services that the district has, you know, obviously, you know, the first, you know, if we're looking at it from least restrictive to most restrictive, we're looking at, you know, our co-taught models. And I, I firmly believe that we have some really good co-taught models. But I also think that teachers could also benefit from some support in, in kind of strengthening those, that model, whether that's through professional development. Because I do think, you know, that's our, you know, if you were to look at that, that's our, you know, co-taught tier-one kind of instructional model. And, you know, having that partnership between a special ed teacher and, and a general ed teacher is so important. And it, it, it's a dance between those two teachers. And, you know, sometimes I think, you know, I think that as, as adults, we can sometimes struggle with that, just to know what our role is. And I, you know, I firmly believe that, that, that is an area that we could strengthen. And then we look towards, you know, our, our partial inclusion model that, you know, that we have, you know, in, in pockets. I think that's probably our biggest challenge and the biggest area that I could see growth in is those students who don't require least, most restrictive in a program kind of setting, but also kind of struggle in that co-taught setting. You know, really forming a more solidified model of what that looks like. Because I think that we're seeing more and more students who are kind of that in-between, that they, they need more. And having a consistent programming across elementary, middle, and high school that kind of supports that, I think is really important. And then, you know, obviously, we have, you know, a robust and wonderful set of programs within the district. You know, that I, that is challenging. You know, I think that we are seeing, particularly since COVID, you know, I, the needs of the students have just magnified and increased. And I think that we continue to kind of modify and mold programming for those students. You know, I, I think that, again, could be an area of kind of, that we take a look at, that we look to see what is the best model in order to support those students. You know, where, you know, maybe more service providers are working in the classroom rather than outside the classroom. But, you know, I think we do an excellent job of kind of meeting those, those students' needs. And it's challenging for them.
Thank you. And you kind of, you spoke a little bit about this, but, so for the follow-up, could you now describe your vision for what, an ideal, knowing what you know, right? An ideal continuum of services looks like in Dartmouth? Your vision?
So, so again, I, you know, I think, you know, always keeping kind of, you know, least restrictive environment in our mind. Again, I think it's strengthening co-teaching. I think it's being creative about our model of, with programs. But I, I, I think a good bulk of the work really needs to be that, that in-between in how we support those students kind of who have, have different needs than, than just a co-taught model or, or, you know, a restrictive model. And while at the same time keeping students in district, you know, as much as we can. You know, because they have a right to be here. They have a right to, you know, be in this environment and be in their community. I think that's one of the things that I'm so excited about our transition program that we are, you know, developing, is that it's allowing students, again, kind of a, a separate continuum for your eighteen-to-twenty-two population, where you are, you know, providing them opportunities to grow and learn new skills in pre-vocational and vocational school skills and transition skills for adulthood that, you know, but within our district as opposed to outside of our community.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
Do we have follow-ups or?
Yeah.
All right. So.
You're going to have to ask.
Yeah, the same follow-up the next time.
The same.
That's fine. Okay. Let me just mark it here. So as a follow-up, you talk about the least restrictive environment and growing programs. I'm certainly appreciative of that. I've been chair of SMAC for now for eight, nine years. And I, I certainly have a good understanding, not as much as my colleague, Mrs. Amaral of Special Education, but I certainly do have a good understanding. So in your opinion, what is the tipping point where you say the district can no longer support the needs of these students, right? Because we, we, we've had this, this, we've tried to grow programs in the past at Quinn, for one example, and it, it wasn't as successful as we would have hoped.
Sure.
So while I certainly appreciate the least restrictive environment, keeping students in the district, at what point for you is the tipping point, all right, we, we need to reconvene the team. We need to have conversations around maybe that keeping the student in district is, is not the best outcome for that student?
Yeah. You know, I think it's a process. I think it's, you know, it's an individual, you know, based on whatever the disability is. But I, I think it is a, it's not a hasty process. I think it's a process where we're constantly going back and reevaluating our practice and saying, okay, let's try this. You know, let, let's meet for, you know, let's see how that works for six weeks, seven weeks, eight weeks, and see what happens after that. Can we think of anything else? Because, you know, I, I, I really think that kids have, have the right to be here if they can. And while at the same time, there does come to a point where, you know, that might not be possible. Once, once supports are tried and, and tried in multiple ways and, you know, multiple versions and, you know, I'll give, I'll give, I'll give an example. So, you know, if you have a student who is, you know, has an emotional disability and, you know, is really struggling within the classroom. One of the things that I had started when I came to the district was starting clinical services meetings. And basically, those meetings are a chance for our, our schools at the elementary level to really look at behavior with a, with someone from the outside who can kind of take a, take a, an overview, a purview of it and provide support and recommendations. In addition to doing that, you know, it's Carolyn McCurney from South Coast Collaborative. In addition to doing that, one of the things that I thought was really important was not only, you know, for her to come in and do some of that brain-based kind of recommendations, but staff needed to be trained in what that meant and how they could implement that in their classrooms. And so over the course of three years, professional development was offered for all elementary staff, so that all elementary- for all elementary staff, so that all elementary staff was trained in those principles. And so I think when we're, we're talking about a student who might have emotional challenges and behavior plans are tried at a school level, you know, then, then, you know, maybe we bring in a consultant and have the consultant also kind of come in and take a look and provide recommendations. And then if that doesn't work, maybe the consultant comes in again. We really try to kind, we really try to exhaust everything that we have in our toolbox before we kind of make the decision that, you know, maybe, maybe right now, for, for now, you know, this student kind of needs supports that we don't have here.
Thank you.
Sorry, we're sharing a microphone here today. I have the next question. And you did this, the person that's going to be in this position has a potentially big fiscal impact to the district, both in terms of the cost of services we provide, but the liability to the district when we don't provide the services that our students need and deserve. So can you talk about your, your sort of fiscal experience, your experience managing budgets? And describe how you balance the need to provide exceptional education to all our students with special needs and the fiscal constraints of the district?
You know, I, I, I look at that in terms of, you know, you know, everything I, that I've done even without a district. Out of district tuitions are not cheap. And really trying to balance putting programming in place within the district to support students as much as we can prior to them, you know, having to make a decision to potentially place them out of district. You're, you're absolutely right. You might mean next to salaries and transportation, special education has the, has the, the biggest budget, you know, with the, the most expenditures and the most liability. And, you know, the reality is right now that there isn't a lot of money. You know, we're, we're dealing with a situation where, you know, we get pockets of money from, you know, three kind of revenue sources, our operational budget, our, you know, entitlement grant, and then circuit breaker. And, you know, that is it. So I think one of the biggest challenges, you know, then becomes how do, you know, you constantly reevaluate and constantly look at ways of reallocating what you do have in ways that could enhance programming? You know, I think that is one of the things, when I think of the transition program, that was one of the things that we kind of talked about in terms of, not only were we in a position in, where we felt that students' needs could be met here in district, but at the same time, it, it, you know, we're also talking about reallocating resources as well. And I think that that's one of the biggest things that, and the biggest challenges that, you know, not only, you know, in special education, but across the board in education, we're, we're facing at this point in time.
Thank you.
I have the next question. How do you feel you can make a difference in educational outcomes if appointed to this position?
So I think, I think my biggest, one of my biggest strengths is forming relationships. And whether that be relationships with, with staff, with students, with parents. And although, you know, special education is very individualistic in some ways, because it's all about the individual, individual needs of a student, I'm a firm believer that, you know, it takes a team effort to, you know, to increase outcomes for kids. And so I think there's a number of ways of doing that. And, you know, when we look at, at staff development, I think that that is extremely important in, in good outcomes for kids. You know, providing staff with professional development opportunities that are differentiated based on where, where teachers are, what they're doing, what population they're serving, that it's not this one-size-fits-all type of professional development. I think that that's very important. I think that's definitely a way of increasing educational outcomes for kids. Because I think that, you know, we have such a talented group of staff here. And like I said before, I learn so much from them on a daily basis. Whether it, you know, they learn from each other and do some peer kind of professional development is just as important as bringing in someone from the outside, you know, and, you know, but I also think it needs to be relevant. And, you know, you need to, to leave a professional development opportunity with stuff in your toolbox, that it's not something that, you know, you go and it's so theoretical that you leave there and you feel like I, I just wasted an hour or two hours of time. So I think that that's one of the big ways that we can kind of increase educational outcomes for kids.
Thank you. And as a follow-up, what challenges do you anticipate, or would you anticipate?
I think that's based on, based on what I, I just said about what I think would help. I think probably the biggest challenge would be to juggle the differentiation of PD. Because I think that, you know, I don't think it would be a staffing challenge. I think people are eager to learn. You know, I mean, that's why we're in this business in some ways is, you know, not only to be teachers, but also to be lifelong learners. And, you know, I think people are eager to kind of find ways of supporting kids and, and, and improving outcomes for kids. So I think it would, it, it's more a, a matter of finding the targeted, relevant professional development that could meet the needs of, of some vast and varied groups. So I think that would be it.
Thank you.
So my question actually delves a little deeper into what Mr. Oliver had just asked. And I know you've spoken a bit about, you know, adding clinical services piece, differentiated professional development. So, you know, just to kind of expand upon that and again, dig a little deeper. When making important decisions regarding curriculum, resources, and professional development, take us through your process from start to finish, including steps you would take to ensure district-wide implementation?
First and foremost is getting, getting a group of people together and getting more heads together to kind of look at what, what the needs are. I am not, you know, someone who thinks that I know it all and know what the needs of, of everyone are. And my thoughts might be totally different and, and separate in a part than what those people are that are doing the work. And so I think that that would be, that would be my first step in the process. Would, would really be to look at, you know, and to talk to people. You know, one of the things that I think is, is really important is, you know, to have, you know, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm a counselor, you know, by, by, by trade, you know, from years ago. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, relationships matter to me. I want to hear what's happening with staff. I want to hear what their needs are. And, you know, can I do it all? Can I, you know, no. I, you know, I, I can't, you know, make money fall from the trees. But can I be creative about ways to support staffing? And support teachers? I think that that's, you know, really meeting with, with people is, would be my first step. And then once, once the needs are kind of put out there, it's, it's to think creatively, you know? Could there be, you know, could there be competitive grants out there that I could apply for? That could help support some of that professional development? You know, I also, you know, have formed some really good relationships with our area collaboratives who offer professional development as well at, you know, reduced costs for member districts. So it would be really working with them as well to help support our, our teachers in that way. And, you know, I, I think the last piece in that is that I would want, I'd want feedback after the, after the professional development to know whether or not what we did was effective. And if it wasn't, what wasn't effective about it and how can we make it better for the next time?
Thank you. So back to me for the, the final, I think, of our, of our questions. Please share how you would ensure effective communication with families and other stakeholders?
So, you know, I, I think that one of the, the key things with, with communication, whether it's with, with parents or with staff, is responsiveness. And not being afraid to pick up the phone and call someone if they have a concern. You know, not be, you know, making sure that I respond quickly. You know, I, I'm someone who, you know, is up, you know, late at night answering emails because I don't want, I know from the other side as a parent what it's like to kind of wait for, you know, a response from an email and, and knowing, you know, that, that can make the difference in, in terms of how a, you know, how a relationship can go. I think that, you know, one of my goals for, for families, you know, I have to say, we've got a new IEP form that's coming out. It was just rolled out last Friday through the state. And one of the things about the IEP form that I love is that it is very relationship-oriented. You know, it, it really, it asks, it, it makes the team be very thoughtful in their decision-making while also giving parents so much more of a voice in, in the process. And I think that, you know, that whole piece is also another way that we can effectively communicate, is, you know, having vehicles like that. You know, I, the other piece of communication which I think is really important is just being present and being approachable. And being someone who, you know, is in the schools and not afraid to, you know, to, to talk with people and find out, you know, how things are going, you know, the good, the bad, the ugly. And, you know, I think that that is extremely important. You know, and not afraid to, you know, meet with parents and, you know, hear, hear their stories. And, you know, what they, they feel are important factors in their own students' lives and, you know, their educational lives.
Thank you.
Ms. Joden, that concludes all our questions. If you'd like to finish up with a statement, that's fine. If you have questions for us, that's okay too.
So I'll, I'll give some closing remarks, but then I have a question as well. So, you know, first and foremost, I want to thank all of you for the opportunity to meet with me tonight. You know, I, I feel like when I, when I find a district that I feel I can do good work in, I stay. And I feel that this is a district that I can continue to do good work in. I feel like this department is poised at this point to not only continue some of the good work that is happening, but also to enhance it and make it even better. You know, I, you know, would love the opportunity, you know, to, to lead this department and, and grow it and, you know, make a difference. So thank you. And my last question is actually a question that I asked the screening committee when my last question with them. And, you know, I, I'd like to pose it to you for any of you that is willing to answer. And my question is, you know, based on, you know, what you hear from your constituents, what do you think is the biggest priority or priorities for the, the new Pupil Support Services Administrator?
Go ahead, Chris.
I was gonna, I was gonna let Kathleen. Yeah, go ahead, Kathleen. You start.
I've already answered it. As a member of the committee, but I will, but I'd rather have you start.
Sure. So for me, and, you know, certainly being out in the community and being a school committee member, priorities that I'm, that I would like to see is certainly the growing of in-district programs that are thoughtful, communicated well to all stakeholder, all stakeholders involved. And done in a fashion that is sustainable. In addition to that, I, I think that someone, the next leader of the, the Pupil Services Administrator position.
It's a mouthful.
It is a mouthful. Needs to have is, the person needs to be visible. Needs to be visible in the schools, visible to our staff. They need to listen and, for feedback and, and grow the team even stronger than what we have today.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go. I'm looking for someone that, and I'm just writing notes down because someone that's keep, that's gonna keep that, that department growing and, and such. I mean, with the population and the students has, you know, the students' best interest in hand. Personally, I'm excited about the Atlas program with what's gonna happen with those, you know, 18 to 22-year-olds and keeping them in-house and giving them that opportunity. I'm looking for someone who's gonna be transparent and, you know, forthwith, right, wrong, or indifferent type of deal. And someone that's gonna be very collaborative and has to have a good rapport. Also is gonna have to have a good rapport. That person's gonna learn in a hurry. And, you know, we've just appointed Subject Contract Negotiations a new superintendent tonight. So we've got a new superintendent coming on board. So the person's gonna have to, you know, everybody's gonna have to be working together, you know, with Mr. Kylie and our central office staff and the building administrators and such. So the person, you know, the new part of my, it's bed director, it's easier, is, is gonna have a, you know, their hands full the first couple of months. So that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go.
Go ahead.
Yeah. And so, you know, I, I have the unique perspective that I could speak to my, my personal sort of thoughts, but then you, you meant, you did say constituency, so we'll go with that. Mr. Oliver did say a few, just, I think, someone who's visible, a team builder, not afraid to have those hard conversations, supportive of staff. And someone who, you know, in terms of the programs that we have, really, the, Christopher Oliver used the word sustainable, but I would say like a, maybe a stronger infrastructure. And then, you know, maybe some, just the team building and the, the being visible to kind of know how things are going on the ground. And for, to build that trust with, with staff that when you're not there, they know you are there, or at least you have them in mind, I think is important because you have a reputation of being visible and, and communicative, I guess. So nothing out of the range of what either of my two folks said, but.
Yeah, and I'll just, you know, I'll just add, you know, someone who has, you know, a deep understanding and empathy for our families and, and, you know, at all the levels of, you know, we know that children have been going through so much. You know, and, and families were faced with, you know, we've heard many stories of unique challenges. and, and families were faced with, you know, we've heard many stories of unique challenges not being able to get services during COVID. So someone that, again, that warmth and approachability and, and, and again, echoing again, someone that parents, staff, you know, can, can look to as a true leader who, and to be that, and again, to be visible and, and open and in all the buildings and with their students, so, yep.
Great. Well, thank you.
All right, so since everyone else. I will just build, you know, I agree with everything my colleague said, but I will, you know, you asked about what you hear from constituencies and building on what Ms. Waite said. You know, there's a real concern about the influx of need from the pandemic and, and how we're going to be able to manage that. Because there's going to be a lot more children who need services because of that. And unfortunately, the resources are going away next year. So how do we do that, right? How do we manage that? It's gonna take a lot of leadership to figure out how to meet the real needs. And from what I hear in the community, I see it in my work, people see it in their lives. These kids, I say needy, not in a bad way. I say it because they've been through a lot.
Absolutely.
And how are, how are we gonna, how are we gonna manage that? Is gonna take some leadership and some vision for the district. And so that's important, I think, to people in the community, but also to me.
I agree.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all very much again for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, sure. I wrote them all down. Well, I paraphrased them, but can't hear it.
Yeah. That's fine.
The other blank.
I got it.
You got it?
Thank you.
All right.
Bless you.
And for those of you that are at home and watching, we are just waiting for our other candidate to arrive. No problem. We're right back on time.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Lori. How are you?
Great. Thanks for the visual.
Okay. Welcome and thank you for being here. We'll start, I'm not sure if you know everyone, but we'll start whatever, you know, the committee members will introduce themselves.
Chris Oliver.
Shannon Jenkins.
Kathleen Amrell.
John Nunes, I'm the chairman.
And Mary Waite. Lori DiNicio.
Lori, the interview tonight consists of three parts. First and foremost, we're gonna give you an opportunity to make an opening statement if you'd like. Then we have a series of prepared questions for you. We've provided you with a copy so that you have an opportunity to look back to them as they're being read or as you're answering so that you're good to go. And also at the end, give you an opportunity to make a closing statement if you'd like. And, you know, if you'd like to ask us any questions, you're, you know, more than welcome to. We have allocated one hour for the interview. So with that, the floor is yours, ma'am.
So as I said, my name is Lori DiNicio. This is my 19th year in public education. Seventeen of those years have been here in Dartmouth. Fifteen of those years as a speech-language pathologist and the last two as a team facilitator at Quinn. I am also a resident and the parent of two students in the system, a fifth grader at Potter and a seventh grader at the middle school. As my career progressed, I started to become interested in the larger scope of special education outside of my therapy room at Potter School that looked like being part of the PBIS coaching experience when that initiative first ruled out in the district many years ago. A lot of work with RTI and reading intervention planning. I provided professional development for our kindergarten and first grade teachers around phonological awareness and early reading skills. When I transitioned to Quinn, the scope of that work changed quite a bit. I've been involved in developing district protocol and procedures around recommending certain evaluations, as well as when and how to recommend a one-to-one power professional for students, creating visuals to help make team meetings more interactive and parent-friendly, and developing and facilitating a professional development strand that we do on early release days, primarily focused on our substantially separate programs in order to really look at what we're doing with those students in order to really make some changes. You may look at my resume and say, well, she's never been an administrator. And you will be right. I have never been an administrator. But for many years, I have been a leader in this department. And I'm here tonight because I believe that is what we need at this time. Collaborative, human-centered, present leadership in order to make the necessary changes in the special education department here in Dartmouth.
Thank you. Ms. Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll kick off the, the questions here. As you know, the position of pupil support services administrator is multifaceted. With the ideal candidate balancing many priorities, in your opinion, what is the most important aspect of the job?
That is such a hard question because every aspect is so important. But I have to go with, and I feel like I'm stealing something, but that sense of belonging. So we talk about sense of belonging for students. But I believe we need a sense of belonging for staff. And when you talk about special education, we tend to like use a broad brush. So we have regular ed and special ed. We have classroom teachers and non-classroom teachers. And in the reality of schools these days is that the positions are far more nuanced than that. And we, all of those staff members need to have a sense of belonging. They need to see their place at the table. So that means what? That means planning for them. That means thinking about them. That means understanding their role and their job and how they contribute to the team. So when you're providing professional development, you're actually working towards the needs of this staff, which will translate into improving outcomes for students because then you're improving the education for students. I also think that means knowing your staff, right? Like, this is a big district. There are 630-something IEPs. So at Quinn, my rule for myself is I will not walk into a team meeting without knowing that kid. Whether that means I go in the classroom for 10 minutes or talk to the teacher, I need to know who that student is. And while that might be a big ask for, for a SPED director, I do think that that level of relationship building and sense of belonging is super important to make sure that we are retaining the staff that we have.
Thank you.
So I have the next question. And my question is, how would you describe your leadership style? And can you relate the style to specific examples of your leadership in action?
Yeah. I do believe that, again, I use, I use these sort of generic terms, collaborative, human-centered, because I believe that people are the most important part of the job. But also the word facilitator, so that's my job at Quinn, right? I'm a facilitator. And I do believe that that's my leadership style as well. I help to facilitate change. I am not, I do not have all the answers. I am nobody's guru. But what I do is remove barriers, create containers so that the staff can work together to sort of bring their expertise to the table. At Quinn, that has looked like, again, this professional development strand that we started. And I propose that because we have all these conversations all the time about things we want to change. But we never have time to do them. So I proposed this strand so that we had time to talk about them so that we could make changes and implement them strategically. One of those changes has been a dedicated consultation time. So from 3:00 to 3:30, our substantially separate program teacher and the related service staff that works with that classroom sit down every day and talk about kids. This didn't cost a dollar. All it took was some kind administrators who are willing to help with dismissal. And what we're seeing from that is amazing conversation that is actually impacting students. So when I say I facilitate, again, that was, I don't even know whose idea it was. It was not my idea, but all I had to do was sort of put it together, make it happen, and that's how the changes occur. And again, I just think that the people are the most important part of this job. So that needs to be the priority in leadership.
Thank you.
This one's mine. This is a position that you will sometimes have to say no to a parent or student. How would you explain that answer to a parent or a student? And then I've got a follow-up for you.
So recently, I've had lots of practice with this. It occurred to me when I took this job last year, my current position last year, that I was not the good guy anymore. As a speech therapist, you're always the good guy. You're helping the kid communicate, and there's nothing better than that. As a team facilitator, that's not always the case. I'm having difficult conversations with parents about why we're changing services, what things are looking like, why progress isn't happening, struggles that might be happening in school that are new, and that's tricky. I think the conversation of the services on the IEP is probably the trickiest, right? So a student gets 10 hours of ABA a week, and we want to change it to eight and a half hours of ABA a week. And some parents will struggle with that decision. So it really has to be a back-and-forth conversation about the data that we're using to drive the decision and why, because it's our job to provide the least restrictive environment in which the student can make effective progress. So that, in order to have those conversations, you need to have trust. Those parents need to trust the team that is working with their child, that they have their, the child's best interest in heart, at heart. Not that they're always gonna get what they want, not that their, services are always gonna stay, stay the same, but trust that what we're recommending is what's best for the child. And that comes, again, with building relationships. We need to build relationships with these families. So the us against them, whether that's school versus families or Bush Street versus schools, that doesn't work. We all need to be on the same page, rowing in the same direction, and, and have the families understand that we're doing what's best for their kid. That trust is so important. So many conversations around that usually involve a partial rejection of an IEP, in which case we sit back at the table and we talk about it. And sometimes that's a compromise, like, okay, we're gonna continue the service delivery until X date, at which time we're going to reevaluate. So compromise is one of the strategies. Sorry, I'm jumping to your second question.
That's okay.
And other times, it's just having a conversation to explain a little bit more about our position, about why we're recommending this. One example is that recently, we had a team and the, the student's parent wanted a one-to-one for their child. So we wrote a statement that reflected that. But our idea was to use already existing program staff to support that student rather than hiring someone else. The mother rejected it. We sat down and we sort of re-explained our thinking because she was coming from a place where she thought we weren't giving it to the student because we're trying to save money. But in reality, our idea was, we have staff that is trained, that is on board, that knows this child. This will be a better fit. And once she knew that, once she knew it wasn't about money or it wasn't about taking anything away, then she got on board. Again, she said, as most parents do, we're gonna see how this works, and if it doesn't work, we're gonna come back to the table. And that's really what this process is. You've got to use your data to make your decisions. But at the same time, you always have that ability to sort of go back and revisit those decisions.
Thank you. You answered the follow-up, so thank you.
So I have a question that does have a follow-up. And I believe my colleague, colleague, Ms. Oliver, will have a follow-up to the follow-up to be consistent across the board. So recognizing the various programs and special education models that we currently have in Dartmouth, please describe how the district can best support the unique needs of each.
So I believe in individualizing IEPs. That's what the I is for. And I think sometimes when we sit down to write an IEP, it becomes a little bit of muscle memory. So the student has a weakness in reading. We're gonna give them 5x30 in the B grid and 5x30 in the C grid in order to work on their phonics skills. I prefer a more reflective approach. What are these students' strengths? What are these students' weaknesses? What is the specially-designed instruction the student actually needs in order to make effective progress? And that, I'm actually hoping the new IEP sort of breaks those habits for us because we will have no muscle memory for that, and we will have to be very reflective. And so I, I do think that that reflective practice, that thinking about that student in front of you, what the expectations are and how you're gonna support them to meet those expectations. I also believe 1,000% in collaboration. Collaboration between related service providers, classroom teachers, special educators. My least favorite thing is to look at an IEP and see a goal that's repeated three times in three different ways. The SLP has a goal for answering questions. The SPED teacher has a goal for answering questions. We only need one goal for answering questions. Everyone just needs to work on it. So that is one of the things that we're working on in this professional development strand. How do we write? How do we measure? How do we attack collaborative goal writing? So I think the best way to meet the unique needs of a student is to provide them the services they need in a reflective way and to collaborate with the rest of the team.
So now, could you describe, as a follow-up, could you describe your vision for what an ideal continuum of services would look like in Dartmouth?
Oh, gosh. So flexibility. I, again, we get so stuck with it's always been this way or I've always done it this way. And I, I don't think that's gonna move us forward. I think we need to be flexible thinkers about what our students need. I am lucky enough in my job to get to go to different schools and see different kids and consult on them and tell them when I think about what's happening. And that's amazing. Other special educators don't get to do that, and I think they need to. I think we need to see each other's classrooms. A child at DeMello with a reading disability should not be getting different services than a child at Potter with a reading disability. We are one district. So I think while we need to, I, individualize the IEP, we also need to make sure that we're on the same page as a district with the services we are providing. And I, I do think we get there by visiting each other, by talking, by making use of our, our staff meetings in order to sort of shore up some of those services. And I will also say that it is a continuum, right? Like, that's what the grid is for. So it can't all be this or all be that. I think it really need, we need to have that flexibility. Perhaps a student has a real significant weakness in math, but in reading, they are, they are, you know, just a little below grade level. So that should be reflected in the IEP perhaps. The services are more restrictive for the math and in the ELA, less. That might mean there are two SPED teachers working with them. That can get messy. But I do think, coming back to the table and having those conversations with that flexibility in mind and individualizing each IEP is how we get there. And I think it's just a constant conversation. My vision would just be really thinking about it and, and being reflective and being proactive about our decision-making.
Thank you. And I'm gonna turn it over to my colleague who has a follow-up to that follow-up.
So as a follow-up, in, as we're looking at placing students in the least restrictive environment, and that's clearly, most of the time, it should be in district. In your opinion, what is the tipping point for when we need to go back to our, reconvene the team, speak to our related service providers, our special education teachers, and, and the parents, clearly, as to, what's the tipping point for consideration of an out-of-district placement?
My least favorite words to hear are, this kid doesn't belong here. And unfortunately, that's, that's where you get when the level of frustration is high and you feel like you've exhausted all of your tools and, and nothing's working. You're not making progress with this kid. This kid doesn't belong here. And I think we need to reframe that question as, what services does this child need that we are not currently providing? So the tipping point is, what have you done? And I do think we need to shore up our processes and procedures around this. What, if you have difficulty with a student in your class, if the team isn't agreeing, if we're not seeing progress, what's the process for that? We don't have one. Everyone makes it up, right? So that's an issue. We, we need, we need a process for that. I do think what we need to do is reach out in district. So some, some schools have had me come because I work at Quinn and that's where the programs are. to consult, to say, have you tried this? Have you tried that? So I think using our in-district resources is our first stop. We have a lot of brilliant people in this district, and we need to leverage that talent. And we're not, right? So I think we need to find ways to do that, to build capacity across our schools to deal with these more complicated cases. So again, the process would be, reach out in district, have someone consult, make a plan. Is it working? You have to have steps, and almost like a flow chart, everyone loves a flow chart in special education, in order to get to the point where you say, I think we need to look elsewhere. And really, the question is, are we meeting the student's needs? And sometimes the answer is no. We are not. And what does the student need that we don't have? And I think that those are the questions that we need to answer before we make those decisions.
Thank you.
So I have the next question. So the person in this position has a big fiscal responsibility in terms of, you know, the district's budget, both in terms of the cost of providing services, but also the liability we're exposed to when we don't provide the services that students need. So can you talk about your experience in managing budgets and describe how you would balance the need to provide exceptional education to our students with special needs, but also balance the fiscal constraints at the district basis?
Yeah. My experience with budgets is limited. So much of special education is fixed numbers, right? So we have tuitions we have to pay, we have transportation we have to pay. So a lot of the budget is eaten up by that. So the first part of it is, are we, you know, is our circuit breaker in line? Do we have extraordinary relief funds available? And then what's left? And it can't be what's left, let's see what we can do with the budget. It needs to be what's left and where are the needs? So again, I think that proactive planning, the looking at the data in order to make budgetary decisions is most important. But I think the budget is way more than the money, right? Like, so if you have a parent who does not trust their team, does not believe that they are providing adequate service for their child, they might make decisions about placement that negatively impact our budget. So I think our budget needs to go back to, are we building those relationships with families? Are we utilizing the talent and the knowledge and the expertise in our district to provide adequate services for students? Are we building trust? Are we building relationships? If you have that, then there'll be less sort of damage on your budget when those things come up. Again, I go back to, we provide exceptional education by using the exceptional staff we have. And we need to think about how we spread that wealth across the district.
And I'm up next. How do you feel you can make a difference in educational outcomes if appointed to this position? And what challenges do you anticipate?
So I think making changes that directly impact students is what's going to make a difference with educational outcomes. Again, I go back to that free, 3:00 to 3:30 consult time we have instituted at Quinn. That has already, in the two months that we have been doing it, affected change for our students as far as behavior plans, as far as progress we're seeing, as far as our ability to write and track collaborative goals. So what can we learn from that? And how can we spread that across the district? Obviously, this is what's happening in one building. But again, this can be a model for other things to come. I also think that we can make an educational difference by making sure that our staff is well-trained. As you know, the dyslexia legislation is on its way through the State House, and that's going to hold us accountable to another level of providing for students. And I think our staff needs to be ready for that. And I think we have the resources within the district to make sure the staff is ready for that. But again, it's taking an honest look at, where are the strengths and weaknesses? And how do we build on those weaknesses in order to make necessary change? The challenges that I anticipate, and I say this in the most loving way, are the people. I heard the term "loving critic" the other day, and I thought, oh, I think that's what I am. But I think that's what a lot of us are, right? We love this place. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here. Dartmouth has its challenges. And if you are still here, you're here because you want to be. You're here because you're committed. You're here because this is your place. So listening to those loving critics and sort of taking all that information in and having those hard conversations and pushing back when necessary, I think that that's going to be the challenge. But that's where the work is. That's where the work is. And I think you need to make room for that when you're in a leadership position.
Thank you.
So I think, like, pulling upon a bit of what you've already told us about your leadership style, and again, you know, some needs you see internally with professional development. It says, my question is, when making important decisions regarding curriculum, resources, and the aforementioned professional development, take us through your process from start to finish, including steps you would take to ensure district-wide implementation?
Have you ever heard of implementation science? It's a new thing. Okay. So implementation science is this whole new field that's coming out because we have all this research about education, and then we have education. And they don't talk to each other, right? So this whole field of implementation science is now, how do we implement change? How do we implement curriculum? How do we implement professional development? And there are four levels. So the first level is, well, we told them to do it. And level four is, well, it's become part of the culture. So I think we can look at initiatives we've had in the district and map them along that continuum. Like PBIS is level four. We own that. But many, many things are level one. So if you want real change, you cannot have level one implementation. So how do you get there? You get there through coaching. You get there through observation. You get there from modeling. So teachers are watching other teachers implement and use whatever curriculum you happen to be using. That's how you get there. And I think because we've done it successfully before, we can do it again. We know what it takes. It's just work, and it's commitment. And the other part of implementation science is de-implementation. So that's sort of when you say, we're not worrying about that anymore. Because what happens is, as a classroom teacher, as a special education teacher, you have all these things on your plate. And you don't know that we're not worrying about this one anymore because we put this one on your plate. So especially with new leadership coming in, we need to say, we're not focused on that anymore. That is not a priority for us. We are focused on whatever it is. So looking at implementation as, are we looking at the research? Are we then putting the research to practice? And are we really fostering that across the spectrum? Is how I would answer that question.
Excellent. Thank you.
So back to me for the final question. Please share how you would ensure effective communication with families and other stakeholders?
Brené Brown says, clear is kind. So I think that communication needs to be clear. It needs to be responsive. And sometimes it needs to be on the telephone or on a Zoom. I think a lot can get lost in email, especially when you're going back and forth with parents or staff about really sensitive issues. And even though no one likes to do it, I think sometimes it's important to pick up the phone and just talk about it. But again, part of that communication is having those hard conversations. It is challenging. But I think that when you're in that space with a parent or a teacher, that you're coming to them and you're saying, look, this is the issue, and you're having that clear communication, that's when you solve problems. That's when you lessen the hurt feelings. People want to be heard. They want to know that you heard them. So I think acknowledging that is super important. And I think communication also needs to be timely. So if you get an email and you're not sure how to respond because you have some digging to do, I think it's okay to say, I'll get back to you in two days. I need to, you know. But again, acknowledging that you received that communication, letting them know you're sort of thinking about it, I think can stave off a lot of bad feelings about miscommunication.
Thank you.
That concludes our questions to you. At this point, I'll give you an opportunity, if you'd like to make a closing statement and/or ask us any questions?
I have no questions. First, I just want to say thank you for your time. You guys have invested so much time this month in making really important decisions. And as a voter, I say that hats off because you're putting in the work. So thank you for that. Microphones and talking about special education are two of my favorite things. So you guys made some dreams come true tonight. And I don't mean to be cliche, but it has truly been an honor just to be nominated. The support I have received and the encouragement I have received from my colleagues has been so humbling. And it's that support that will continue to fuel my passion, my passion to advocate for these kids and to work to make this department better. And I will continue to do that, whether it's from Bush Street or Hawthorne Street or Cross Road or Dartmouth Street or Slocombe Road, because this is my place, and these are my people. And the students of this district deserve nothing less. So thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Okay. Are we good? Do we want a couple of minutes to digest everything? Take a quick recess?
I would love that.
Okay, perfect. All right. We're going to be in recess for a few minutes, and we'll be back. Thank you. Relax. Relax.
Yeah, so I thought both candidates were great. As with our first search, they have two sort of different strengths. You know, I guess I'm looking at this right now as sort of where we are as a district as a whole. We have a new superintendent coming in who's going to be sort of learning the ropes. And we have one candidate who, I mean, I think they were both great, but I am concerned about the lack of management experience. I'm concerned about the lack of budget experience from Ms. Dionisio. I love her. I think she's awesome. Her passion is fabulous. But she's been a team leader for two years. I don't even think two full years. It sounds a little bit more like a year and a half, maybe? I don't have her resume in front of me. She hasn't, doesn't have the extensive management experience, which I feel like when we have a superintendent coming in and trying to figure their way around the district, to also have our pupil services administrator not having that central office experience, I just worry about how that's gonna work. So, I appreciate both of the candidates, but I think for maybe some practical reasons, I might lean more towards Ms. Joden.
Well, I appreciate everyone's feedback thus far. I think, first of all, we have two great candidates. I'm thrilled that they're both internal. It says a lot about what we're doing as a district. And, you know, I love to see us being able to, within our capacity, grow our own leaders in this district. We have Lori Joden, Mrs. Joden, who certainly has served in the capacity of a district coordinator, gave a very compelling interview this evening, certainly has quite a bit of management experience, budgeting experience with outed districts. On the other side, we have Lori Dionisio, who is clearly a very passionate educator. That's really up until a couple of years ago. She was certainly, well, related service provider, speech-language pathologist, clearly has an extreme amount of passion and an ability to connect with staff on a personal level. I do agree and echo some concerns around the budgeting. Having a new superintendent coming in is a little bit of a concern, and the lack of budget experience with this position being such a high-profile position for finance. I do agree to some extent that a lot of the costs are fixed, transportation, tuitions, and obviously staffing, right? What I would like to remind the committee, some of you who was not here at the time, but when we were interviewing for this position, when Mrs. Townsend took over, she came to us and she presented to us, and I have her resume up here, I was able to go back, with a little over, close to four years of principal experience. And speaking from now a professional standpoint of being in education, I know that principals, there's not a lot of wiggle room in a principal's budget. So, as far as budgeting goes, I don't see, and, you know, I'm not trying to disrespect any of our principals that may be in the audience, but essentially, central office really gives the principals their budget. That's a fact. Other than advocating for staffing changes, your supply lines are pretty much the only thing that you're able to manipulate and order from. So, like I said, I'd like to remind everyone that Beth only had four years of principal experience, no central office experience, and no special education administrator experience. So, weighing both of them, while I certainly have concerns around the budgeting aspect, I want to believe that Mrs. Dionisio would do what it takes to work on the budget. And that's the only way that I would see this possible. Mrs. Joden also has, you know, a tremendous amount of experience, and she's been in this role, I think she said, for seven years now. However, I think, in my honest opinion, that the special education department needs to go in a different direction. And for those reasons, I personally would have to support Lori Dionisio.
I guess it's me. Thank you to everyone. And again, I'll let go of Mary's comments, just my thanks to everyone that's been involved in this process. Those of us that gave up a Saturday in the rain to interview all these candidates. I will say this, these two young ladies that were here tonight was exactly the same type of interview that they had that Saturday. Nothing has fluctuated, so that is always good. It's always a lot of fun, and it makes it interesting, in my perspective, when they make your job a lot tougher. Okay? It's like get Miss Amaral in a break, you know, this is why we get the big bucks, to make these great decisions, type of deal. That being said, in all seriousness, I thought both candidates were excellent. Their answers are entirely different, you know? So, that makes it interesting, type of deal. However, I'm one to, and again, yeah, we're fortunate, we have two in-house, and I'm a firm believer that if we have someone in-house, type of deal, you always, you know, if they have the qualifications and such, you know, when they pass muster, you give them an interview and let it go from there. And, you know, let the chips fall where they fall. Again, both candidates in-house did excellent in the interviews, the writings potted it that we gave to them. I think I have to go back and I have to, you know, lean towards Ms. Joden.
Again, with the experience, I'm, you know, being a nuts-and-bolts-and-a-dollar guy, I'm concerned about the budget. You know, I mean, Ms. Joden did have some good answers, you know, with regard to the budget and how it's funded and everything else. This is a position that you've got to be able to, you know, wrap your hands around that budget, because unfortunately, one or two slip-ups and we're in trouble, you know, budget-wise, district-wide, et cetera, type of deal. So, I mean, with that, in all seriousness, I am 99.99% certain I'm leaning towards Ms. Joden.
This is what Miss Amaral gets for passing on her turn.
Well, now I can, right, when you play Yankee Swap, you can come back and you can, I'm gonna take your answer and your answer and yours, and blend it. But, Mr. Joden?
Right ahead. You said you wanted to come back.
Yeah, I do want to come back to it. You know, I, you know, I'm, I, this is a difficult one, you know, and I will start it off by saying, you know, I recognize the feedback. I have perhaps maybe a different relationship with Lori J than others, and so I see a different side, and I do see, but what I loved about Lori D, and I don't want to butcher anybody's name, and when you talk about the budget, and I liked how she talked about the budget in terms of the people and the humanity in that, and that it's about the stories and about the why. And so, I appreciate the creativity, and I do think that that and the relationship building could reap rewards. And so, I don't want to come in and say, oh, I know Lori J, and she's lovely, and she's the assistant, and I work well with her, and dismiss Lori D because of the lack of central office experience, when I do know and have heard and have consulted, have had several conversations around the incredible, you know, creativity and the lens in which she kind of approaches her work in this district. And I do think that I know both of the candidates, I have received lots of feedback, and my son is, full disclosure, I've mentioned this probably a million times, but he is a product of Quinn Elementary, and then there did come a time when what was in the best interest of him, in a thoughtful way, a very difficult and thoughtful way, has brought me to have a relationship with Mitch Jodwin. I'm so sorry, terrible. And so, and I also have a feeling around what we really need as a district, and I do believe that, you know, both candidates are lovely, but one really did speak to, and knowing this person personally, did really speak to some specifics around what I feel would help us move forward in the special education department in a way that, you know, in terms of like relationship building and that sort of thing. And so, I am leaning, I'm split, I would like to hear what, I appreciate what you shared, I would like to hear what my colleagues think, I would like to hear the remaining members think, because I do feel that both folks are qualified. Yes, one may be in an administrative position, but, you know, stepping back, I don't feel that that's the be-all, end-all. I do feel like it's about the humanity and about the relationship and in the culture of that department. And so, I'm really interested in everyone's thoughts and opinions specific to this, and having heard, you know, received the feedback as well. You know, a lot of people tended to send some feedback to me, and I thought, please just don't send that to me, and it's an incredibly awkward position to be in. And so, I asked permission, and we showed it to the group, although I know that lots of folks have been reaching out to the whole committee as well. And so, I would like to, you know, I do have somebody in mind, but I, not to keep you guessing, but I just feel like I would like to, I think it's important for me, having the perspective that I have, that I hear from everyone before I vote or offer that opinion.
Dr. Jenkins?
Yeah, so I thought both candidates were great. As with our first search, they have two sort of different strengths. You know, I guess I'm looking at this right now as sort of where we are as a district as a whole. We have a new superintendent coming in who's going to be sort of learning the ropes. And we have one candidate who, I mean, I think they were both great, but I am concerned about the lack of management experience, I'm concerned about the lack of budget experience from Ms. Dionisio. I love her, I think she's awesome, her passion is fabulous. But she's been a team leader for two years, I don't even think two full years, it sounds a little bit more like a year and a half, maybe? I don't have her resume in front of me. She hasn't, doesn't have the extensive management experience, which I feel like when we have a superintendent coming in and trying to figure their way around the district, to also have our pupil services administrator not having that central office experience, I just worry about how that's gonna work. So, I appreciate both of the candidates, but I think for maybe some practical reasons, I might lean more towards Ms. Joden.
Well, I appreciate everyone's feedback thus far. I think, first of all, we have two great candidates. I'm thrilled that they're both internal. It says a lot about what we're doing as a district, and, you know, I love to see us being able to, within our capacity, grow our own leaders in this district. We have Lori Joden, Mrs. Joden, who certainly has served in the capacity of a district coordinator, gave a very compelling interview this evening, certainly has quite a bit of management experience, budgeting experience with outed districts. On the other side, we have Lori Dionisio, who is clearly a very passionate educator. That's really up until a couple of years ago, she was certainly, well, related service provider, speech-language pathologist, clearly has an extreme amount of passion and an ability to connect with staff on a personal level. I do agree and echo some concerns around the budgeting. Having a new superintendent coming in is a little bit of a concern, and the lack of budget experience with this position being such a high-profile position for finance. I do agree to some extent that a lot of the costs are fixed, transportation, tuitions, and obviously staffing, right? What I would like to remind the committee, some of you who was not here at the time, but when we were interviewing for this position, when Mrs. Townsend took over, she came to us and she presented to us, and I have her resume up here, I was able to go back, with a little over, close to four years of principal experience. And speaking from now a professional standpoint of being in education, I know that principals, there's not a lot of wiggle room in a principal's budget. So, as far as budgeting goes, I don't see, and, you know, I'm not trying to disrespect any of our principals that may be in the audience, but essentially, central office really gives the principals their budget. That's a fact. Other than advocating for staffing changes, your supply lines are pretty much the only thing that you're able to manipulate and order from. So, like I said, I'd like to remind everyone that she only had, Beth only had four years of principal experience, no central office experience, and no special education, well, special education administrator experience. So, weighing both of them, while I certainly have concerns around the budgeting aspect, I want to believe that Mrs. Dionisio would do what it takes to work on the budget, and that's the only way that I would see this possible. Mrs. Joden also has, you know, a tremendous amount of experience, and she's been in this role, I think she said, for seven years now. However, I think, in my honest opinion, that the special education department needs to go in a different direction. And for those reasons, I personally would have to support Lori Dionisio.
I guess it's me. Thank you to everyone. And again, I'll let go of Mary's comments, just my thanks to everyone that's been involved in this process, you know, those of us that gave up a Saturday in the rain to interview all these candidates. I will say this, these two young ladies that were here tonight was exactly the same type of interview that they had that Saturday. Nothing has fluctuated, so that's always, that is always good. It's always a lot of fun, and it makes it interesting, in my perspective, when they make your job a lot tougher. Okay? It's like get Miss Amaral in a break, you know, this is why we get the big bucks, to make these great decisions, type of deal. That being said, in all seriousness, I thought both candidates were excellent. Their answers are entirely different, you know? So, that makes it interesting, type of deal. However, I'm one to, and again, yeah, we're fortunate, we have two in-house, and I'm a firm believer that if we have someone in-house, type of deal, you always, you know, if they have the qualifications and such, you know, when they pass muster, you give them an interview and let it go from there. And, you know, let the chips fall where they fall. Again, both candidates in-house did excellent in the interviews, the writings potted it that we gave to them. I think I have to go back and I have to, you know, lean towards Ms. Joden. Again, with the experience, I'm, you know, being a nuts-and-bolts-and-a-dollar guy, I'm concerned about the budget. You know, I mean, Ms. Joden did have some good answers, you know, with regard to the budget and how it's funded and everything else. This is a, this is a position that you've got to be able to, you know, wrap your hands around that budget, because unfortunately, one or two slip-ups and we're in trouble, you know, budget-wise, district-wide, et cetera, type of deal. So, I mean, with that, in all seriousness, I am 99.99% certain I'm leaning towards Ms. Joden.
This is what Miss Amaral gets for passing on her turn.
Well, now I can, right, when you play Yankee Swap, you can come back and you can, I'm gonna take your answer and your answer and yours, and blend it.
Well, right ahead. You said you wanted to come back.
Yeah, I do want to come back to it. You know, I, you know, I'm, I, this is a difficult one, you know, and I will start it off by saying, you know, I recognize the feedback, I have perhaps maybe a different relationship with Lori J than others, and so I see a different side, and I do see, but I, what I loved about Lori D, and I don't want to butcher anybody's name, and when you talk about the budget, and I liked how she talked about the budget in terms of the people and the humanity in that, and that it's about the stories and about the why. And so, and so, I appreciate the creativity, and I do think that that and the relationship building could reap rewards. And so, I don't want to come in and say, oh, I know Lori J, and she's lovely, and she's the assistant, and I work well with her, and dismiss Lori D because of the lack of central office experience, when I do know and have heard and have consulted, have had several conversations around the incredible, you know, creativity and the lens in which she kind of approaches her work in this district. And I do think that the relationship building, you know, you can learn the numbers, I just did during COVID, I just got my MBA. So, you can learn the numbers, and you can learn that stuff, because I think there's a little bit of a learning curve for both of them, because I think there's some limit to what Ms. Lori J does in the scope of her work in terms of outside of the title. And so, I think to not dismiss either one of them, but I do love the relationship-building piece in terms of thinking about the numbers and the individuality that Lori D brought up in her interview, that I just didn't want to not say that to others in your processing and thinking. So, I, yeah.
Okay.
That's helpful.
Okay, that's good. Okay. So, we are now at a crossroad.
I'll just get back to, you know, again, like, feedback, and again, I do want to reiterate that in the strengths, I thought they were both tremendously impressive candidates. that in the strengths, I thought they were both tremendously impressive candidates. I just still can't, my, the feedback I've gotten, and I'll get back to as, you know, as a representative, from, is that, you know, there hasn't been, in the Special Education Department, one of our weaknesses is that we haven't had people who've been present from the leadership as much. And so that seems to be something that I've received a lot of letters on from staff and families, saying that they would really like to have someone who leads from within, you know, who's much more present. And that was a really significant gap over the last few years. And, you know, we really, we do so much in this district with very little. And our greatest asset are the people on the ground who are working with these students. And we need someone who really is with those folks, who can, you know, and who talks about them not just as teachers, but as professionals, and even further as assets that we can take advantage of. And I don't mean like take advantage of, but I mean like, what we can use throughout this district because we have these internal strengths. I thought that was a very strong testimonial that Lori Dionisio, I'm gonna try, made, because, you know, we need people who believe in their leaders. And over and over again, the testimonies I've received have been, you know, testifying to how much belief they have in her leadership, and she has been a facilitator, it's not as though she hasn't had any leadership. That's been really real, and she values her people. And I don't want to say that Lori, you know, Lori J doesn't. It just was conveyed to me, like, over and over again, you know, that the staff are inspired by Ms. Dionisio. And I think they're willing to, you know, to, you know, again, because she's called collaborator, and she's someone who, you know, really wants to take forth their great ideas and then put them into direct action. And again, that just was conveyed very clearly. So I mean, I guess that's why I'm, you know, feeling very strong on this one in favor of Ms. Dionisio, because I really want to give the hearing to our staff and the people who work with her. I think that's important, so, Miss Rolster. Anyone else?
Okay, thank you, much appreciated. Yeah. I think we have two qualified candidates in front of us.
We do.
For different reasons. This is a tough one.
Yep.
The nice thing is with all the, you don't lose with either one.
We don't.
Okay.
We certainly don't.
They each have, in my opinion, they each have their strengths.
Yep.
I agree.
Type of deal, so, that's what we have. I kind of feel like the old bonanza when Ben Cartwright had to toss the coin in the booth for the, you know, the winner.
I'll say this. The number one concern I have with Lori Dionisio is the budget. The number one concern I have with Lori Jodwin is being out and visible in relationship building. When you put that aside, I think that the budget piece can be worked on, can be learned. We've seen it from our past. Our current Special Education Director, Mrs. Townsend, she learned it. She's done a heck of a good job with it, with keeping the budget straight. And I'm sure it also has a little bit to do with our business manager or Assistant Superintendent of Finance with keeping those numbers straight. I work closely with my Special Education Director and the central office team in my district. And I think for the reasons that some of us have stated, I'm, I'll make a motion that this school committee appoints Lori Dionisio as the Pupil Support Services Administrator.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Mr. Oliver, a second by Ms. Waite, to appoint Lori Dionisio as, Dionisio, as the new Pupil Support Service Administrator. Make sure I have the title correct.
It's a multiple.
That's with all the, that's why I said earlier sped, it was just to make it.
It's a lot easier.
It's a lot easier, it really is, that type of deal. So we have that motion, we have a second. On the motion, any discussion?
I would say no discussion, I am supportive. And I think, again, we, not to be, but we have two candidates who are part of our family and part of our community. And it's really about weighing, you know, the pros and the cons, and I appreciate everyone's thoughts. And that's all I have to add.
That's fine, no problem. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes three to two. Congratulations. Subject to contract negotiations. All right, so that finally, believe it or not, takes care of all the business.
Oof. Oh, my goodness.
And.
I think this has been.
And we're right on time, believe it or not, we're right on time.
Get out of here.
Well, no, we're ahead of time. We are ahead of time. Anyhow, okay. That being said, we're good, and we move on to new business. We already took care of the reserve fund transfer, superintendent's update.
I'll be quick. So MCAS this week, lots going on in the schools. I did want to report back that, you know, I think the middle school and the middle school staff, Mr. Rossi and his team, they Friday night had a middle school dance for the first time since 2019.
That's great.
They had sold 353 tickets, which is a lot, I mean, it's pretty impressive. They thought they were gonna use part of the gym, they ended up using the whole gym. They had more than 30 staff volunteer for it, and everybody had a good time, from what I understand. So I was happy to hear that.
Saw some pictures. They were dressed to the nines, it was great.
Adorable.
It looked good. We are hosting the Department of Ed for the next couple of days for the tiered focus monitoring visit. So that's always fun, but we're prepared, well-prepared. You thanked everybody for all their efforts through the searches, both searches, I just wanted to reiterate that. It was really a big ask for a lot of people, and a lot of very busy people. So I just really appreciate all the effort that everyone put in. And the only, yeah, the other thing we already talked about was the finance committee Thursday night, so. That's it.
Any questions for the superintendent?
I was just curious, as you brought up Dartmouth Middle School, how the transition has been. I know that Mr. Rossi has been kind of, been weaning in over the past six months. So just curious as to how that's going.
I think he's doing a great job, yeah, he's doing a great job. He's certainly taken ownership of everything, and he's off to the races, you know, without a hitch, really. And, yeah, he's been doing great, and I've been impressed.
No, I've heard, I've heard no complaints. Heard a lot of positive things coming out of the middle school. With that, I'm just wondering, and my apologies, this has already been brought up, but have we considered bringing Mr. Doan back, just for some recognition, for his years of service? I think he was, and I don't know, I, this might have, we might have spoken about this. I just do not remember. And I think for his years of service and dedication to the Dartmouth Public Schools, I think it would be nice if we recognized Mr. Doan for the culture that he built at the middle school.
Certainly would be well-deserved, for sure, I'd be happy to have him back.
No, we, no, we didn't, you didn't miss anything, Chris, seriously. You know, I wanted to stop by.
Right.
To say goodbye, and.
All of a sudden, I think I was speaking to someone, they're like, oh, he's, I don't know if he was.
Gone.
Already gone.
Yeah.
That would be nice.
Yeah.
So, so maybe we could set that up for a future meeting.
Sure.
I think you had talked about, that was one of the things that occurred to me, is when we have the new teachers come in, about doing something akin to that with retirees, and it sounds like we only have one retiree this year, but, you know, that's, you know, how we, of course, bring in the new teachers in the beginning of the meeting, and, you know, welcome them. So something like that as a tradition is nice in general. Especially for Mr. Doan.
I think given Darren's role in the district as a leader for so many years, it would be, I think, good to do something just for him.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Anybody else?
So I just, two things, I remind you, I sent you an email, I forgot about our spelling bee team. I've let them know we're going to sponsor a team, we just have to commit. So I sent you all an email about that.
When did you do that?
Just like a half hour ago.
Oh, okay.
So I'm just letting you know.
I was gonna say, because I hadn't, up until the time I left.
And I also like to try to say these things in open meeting, that I did this, and it's just, it's no deliberation, it's just a reminder about that.
That we already all agreed on.
Correct. The second thing, I'd like to reiterate my request that we provide our student representative with all of the materials for our meetings, the agenda, the budget, all of these things, anything that is not pertaining to executive session. I would hope that we could provide to him when the school committee gets that. And then if he can't make it and someone else from the committee is coming, it would be his responsibility to pass that along. But I would hope that we can start regularly providing him with that information so he can more actively participate in the meetings.
Kathleen, anything? Okay. Mary, you all set?
I am, thank you.
Okay. Couple of things, well, more than a couple of things. Jim, just in all seriousness, a moment to thank you for your leadership. You talked about us with the work we did, but with the superintendent and sped director position, but your leadership getting us through it, and, you know, coordinating with Jim Hardy and all the different schools and districts to make the tours, and, you know, driving around and that type of deal, didn't go unnoticed, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
As Dr. Jenkins said, it's not over yet.
And he did all of that because he wanted to make sure it would be over at the appointed date, right?
That's right.
Let's heal that, no, never mind, I was gonna say something, but no. Just two things, I mean, our fall sport, not fall, our winter sports teams, they had a fantastic season. Congratulations to them. I know our spring sports are up and running, so hopefully they'll have, you know, they will have as much success. This past weekend, our color guide and percussion and winds were both at the Beffet High School Saturday night and up in Dudley, up at Shepherd Hill, Sunday afternoon. And Saturday night, all four groups, the JV color guide, varsity guide, winds and percussion, took first place in their class. And then Sunday was just the winds and percussion, and then again, they both took first place and had an increase in scores both times, so that was good. Next Sunday, this coming Sunday, April 2nd, the music department here is hosting NESPA finals for percussion and winds. Starts at 1:00, I'm assuming doors will open at 12:00. Tickets are $15 for adults, and students and seniors are $10, and it is cash only. You know, sometimes you can come in and you can use a Venmo, or, you know, anything of that nature. No, they're all, it's all cash, type of deal, so we host that. I've got an email out to them about, you know, doing I need presenters or anything of that nature. And unfortunately, they're not, like our superintendent and sped candidates, very collaborative and communicate. So I'll keep you posted, if I need anyone, I'll send out an email, type of deal. Also, on Thursday night, the 9th, we're gonna have our annual night of percussion with all our groups. And we also have a group coming in from Pennsylvania that's gonna be performing there, jazz band and concert band, and such that night, starting at 7:00 in the gym. So, and I think it, I think, I'm not quite sure what the price is on that, I'll be honest. I asked and didn't write it down, so that's that. So that's what's going on, on my end of it. And of course, they're all getting ready to, I'll talk about that next time when they start heading to Dayton and such. So, with that.
Mr. Nunes, just, oh, I know, I'm over on this side. I saw the show choir too, it looks like the show choir was up and running, and something that I'm not, you know, I knew we started this launch this year, so I thought that was really exciting to see, that they, it looks like they were all, you know, did a great job. And so it's exciting to see that addition to our program, and a lot of kids that I've seen in our other, you know, programming coming together for that, so.
Yeah, they were, that's right, thank you. They were out Saturday night, because they got back the same time we did.
Okay.
Not we did, but the band and the winds and percussion did, type of deal, and I understand they took second place.
Yeah, I think Robbie Psycock, Psyock, excuse me, got Beston Show or some special award, I noticed, you know, again, just glancing over social media, but that was exciting.
I think the concert band is at a MICA competition on Friday.
Okay, that's great, lots of great things in our music programming.
That being said.
And that being said, tonight is Ms. Waite's last meeting, and I'm gonna throw a joke in there, in a week I might come back for half of these, hopefully not. But these are for you for just, you know, being, just, it's, you will be missed.
Thank you.
And so appreciate your time and your friendship, and on behalf of the committee.
Well, thank you, guys, I appreciate it. Okay, I'm not, yeah. So I'll just take a second to say thank you. It's been a journey and a great thing to be here with all of you guys. You know, I just, I've learned a lot on this job. I came certainly at a really difficult time with COVID, and, you know, I think we all shared some frustrations and cheers along the way and in that journey, and it was a different job, I think, in many ways during that time. So I have to say that, you know, I've really been, I've learned so much by each of your modeling. And, you know, I, you know, want to also say, just a few moments for Mr. Kylie, thank you for all you've done. You know, your gracious leadership and, you know, work ethic. I think when I was looking at a superintendent, I won't lie, had you as a model, even though I know you didn't want to be in that kind of, you know, position. But, you know, it has been a real learning experience, and, you know, you know, it's also launched me back into my original career because I've been pretty inspired by the people I've seen here. So that's been exciting too, and who knows, maybe I'll find my way back here at some point, but, but, thank you. And also, I have to say, good luck, Kathleen, I want to see you, I don't want to split these flowers. I want you to have, I want you to have your own victory.
Mary, thank you very much for everything, we appreciate it. Like anything else, we don't always agree, but it's always appreciated. Your thought and your insight is always appreciated, and we thank you for that. I thank you for that.
Thank you, Mary.
Wish you the best.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purposes of collective bargaining with union personnel and non-union personnel, and not return to open session.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Oliver. Second by Dr. Jenkins. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing, on, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, my fault.
Roll call.
Yes. Roll call.
John Nunes?
Yes.
Mary Waite?
Yes.
Kathleen Amaral?
Yes.
Shannon Jenkins?
Yes.